Thank you, Kim. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. Tonight is Thursday, July 29. And may I ask for a motion to return to public session? Thank you, Catherine. In a second, please. Seconded by Bill. Thank you all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And if everybody would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And thank you so much to members of our community for joining us tonight. We anticipate a relatively brief business meeting this evening, so I apologize that we're running a few minutes late, but want to reassure you that for those of you who are waiting to speak with us, we will get to public forum in very short order. Tonight is our opportunity annually to adopt the tax levy for the upcoming school year. And so we'll be hearing briefly about that. And we thanked Anell for providing some context and insight. And we'll also spend just a minute talking about board subcommittee appointments for the upcoming school year. And then immediately thereafter, we'll be ready for public forum. So thank you for your patience. I think we're going to start just briefly with some board announcements, if there are any. I'll be glad to pause. Welcome, Abigail. It's nice to see you. Hope you're enjoying your summer. Thank you for joining us. Did any board members have comments or announcements here at the end of July? Perhaps you had a couple of things, Andrew?
Just very briefly, thank you, Marjorie. I'm beginning to get some questions about the opening of school in the fall, understandably. We received an email a couple of hours ago from the state education department, letting us know that they are waiting for updates from the governor's office in terms of health and safety. They anticipate that those will come hopefully relatively soon. They anticipate they'll be in line with current CDC guidance. But that's all we know at the moment. So we look forward to getting that information as soon as possible so that we can begin, continue our planning for the, for the opening in the fall. There's certainly every indication that we look forward to an in-person opening. But obviously, situations continue to evolve, so we'll keep the community and you all informed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. If there are no further announcements, we can push on to 7.01. This is our opportunity to organize ourselves into board subcommittees for the upcoming school year. And thank you to board members for sharing some preferences with me in advance. I'll just start by offering some suggestions, and then please feel free to share your preferences. Tried to think about board members' interests and availability and scheduling. And I thought perhaps as a starting point that Liz, if you're willing to go over to finance for the year, we have a vacancy there. That would then free up a spot on sustainability where Rory and I would like to continue serving. And Catherine, if I can thank you for volunteering to join us, we would really appreciate that. So I think, Kim, just for your records, then we would have in sustainability Rory, Catherine, and myself. And I'm happy to continue to chair the subcommittee unless, Catherine, if that's your desire. No, okay, then. Thank you. I will be glad to chair. And then with regard to finance, I believe Rory, who's not with us this evening, is happy to continue to chair. And thank you to Julia and to Liz, too, for continuing to serve. So that's our finance committee. Let's see, for policy, I think Bill would like to continue to serve and is happy to continue to chair. And Catherine and Ilana, if you are both eager and willing to serve, that would be great. Okay, so that's policy. For audit, Julia, thank you for your willingness to chair. Bill, your willingness to continue to serve. And then I think here we have a vacancy, so I would just ask whether a board member is eagerly awaiting a turn on audit. If not, I'm happy to step in if necessary, but nor do I want to overstep my presence on subcommittees. So would you like to?
Marjorie, can you talk about what the, like, when the audit committee is the busiest and meets most frequently, just the timing of it?
Sure, absolutely. Julia, do you want to say a few words?
The audit committee doesn't even meet monthly. It sort of meets as per the audit process. So we have two audits. We have an internal and an external audit. So the meetings are primarily sort of spring and early summer. We have a very, very early spring where the auditors will tell us sort of that they're getting ready to do our audit. They do that work over the summer. And then the internal audit is part of the spring process. In the fall, we have one meeting to sort of get the results of the audit. So I'd say on an average year, we meet maybe six times. And again, it's a little bit more frequent in the spring. And then usually two meetings in the fall.
And typically, these meetings are in the evening. The auditor comes and joins us in the district just for scheduling purposes.
Yes, yeah.
I'd be happy to step in on audit.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Ilana. That's wonderful. Okay, so Julia will chair, and we've got Ilana and Bill. And then it's been our tradition in recent years, Ilana, to invite the newest board member to serve as parent council liaison, if you'd like to do that.
I'd be happy to do that.
That's great. Thank you. I'm happy to continue to serve as the liaison to the Westchester Putnam County School Board Association. Andrew has invited board members to participate in the Equity and Racial Justice Subcommittee. So although that's not a subcommittee of the board, this would be a good time to just let Andrew and our administrators know who's going to represent the board. And if it's okay with the board, we had a lot of interest, but I think perhaps Catherine and Liz will be our representatives for the upcoming year. And then in future years, hopefully, there'll be even more opportunity for other board members. And if I'm not mistaken, that just leaves discussion of the facilities Subcommittee. This is the new Subcommittee that the board discussed, I think, at our last meeting. And on the assumption that board members have reflected on whether we should go forward with the Subcommittee and do wish to go forward with it, there was plenty of interest here, and I thought perhaps Liz, Rory, and I would serve on that committee. If anybody else, however, is eagerly awaiting representation on facilities, that's fine. If not, then Liz, Rory, and I would be happy to represent the board on that. Okay? And I think that's everything. I will also just mention, especially because we do have members of the community with us, and for those who are watching from home, that tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, Kim is going to send an invitation to members of the community who might also wish to volunteer on these board subcommittees. We have community representation on many of the board subcommittees, and we invite community members to please be on the lookout for that notification and to let us know if you'd be interested in participating for the upcoming school year. That would be great. So I think that's all that we needed to accomplish there for 7.01. And this brings us to item 8.01. If I could please ask Anell to talk with us about the resolution for our tax levy for the upcoming school year, please.
Great. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to report that the district has ended the fiscal year in a very positive position. Our fund equity has increased $2,492,051 from last fiscal year. And it's important to note, this is an unaudited number. Next week, our auditors, our external auditors, will be onsite performing our audit. So our fund equity consists of three components. Our reserves, which are referred to restricted designated funds. These are non-spendable assigned funds. And then unassigned funds. This is also known as our fund balance. So on June 17th, the board increased some of our reserves to be used in a fiscally responsible manner in future years. We had one significant increase in the restricted reserve. Our teachers' retirement subfund, also known as the TRS subfund. We increased that $827,264. So some of you may recall, this is a fairly new reserve. It started a few years ago. This is our third fiscal year where we're permitted to fund it. So at this point, we are funding it to the maximum state level that we're permitted to. This will help ease the burden to taxpayers in future years when teachers' retirement mandated rates fluctuate from one year, one budget season to the next. So another reserve that is worth mentioning is our reserve for encumbrances. This is one reserve that is considered our assigned fund balance. These are planned expenses in the 2021 school year that, for various reasons, couldn't happen. In this particular year, a lot of them are related to COVID delays. So we will take those 2021 planned expenses and move them into the 2122 school year. So that accounts for 2.3 million of our fund equity increase. So originally, in budget discussions, we proposed offsetting the tax levy by two sources. The first was using $750,000 of reserves, and that's what the board voted on back on July 17. We also, at budget time, discussed using $2,450,000 to offset the tax levy. So those two sources total 3.2 million. And this designation is the same as what we designated last year to offset the tax levy. The final classification of fund equity is known as our undesigned and unreserved fund balance. This is where the state caps a set of 4%. I'm happy to report that this year, our undesigned and unreserved fund balance is projected to be 3.69%. So these are, again, on unaudited numbers. Our auditors will clarify this next week. So I also did an analysis of where we ranked with 44 other Westchester school districts. During the budget process, all schools are required to report their projected fund equity to the state. We placed 16 out of 45 on a rankings of those total 45 school districts. This is exactly where we ranked last year at this time. It's important to note that the report from the state does the projections of what school districts are talking about in their budget development process, but I updated it based on our real numbers on June 30th. So the ranking could skew a little bit, but generally speaking, it won't. So what does all this information get us? It gets us to the resolution that is next on the agenda, and that's set in the tax levy. In May, the voters reported, or voted on the expenditure set in the budget. And tonight, the board will adopt a resolution for the major funding source of this resolution, which is taxes. I'm happy to say that the tax levy will remain the same as what we reported in the budget discussions. The tax rates, rates per town will vary slightly. And this is due to assessed value rates changing within the towns. But there are minor variations. The largest variation is 31 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So at this time, I'm happy to answer. Any questions from the board?
No questions? Comments? We really appreciate the analysis and the information you provided to us in advance. Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further questions, then would somebody like to move resolution 8.02? Thank you. Thank you, Julia, and seconded by Liz, if I may. Terrific. So, Kim, do you need us to read anything into the public record? This is our opportunity to establish the tax warrant in the amount of $99,734. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Six zero. Thank you. And I believe this does bring us to public forum, so thank you in advance to community members who've signed up. If you haven't had an opportunity, we invite you to please use the sign up in the back. I believe it's a laptop over by the circulation desk. Just a couple of reminders, gentle reminder that all of us agree to please abide by the district's code of conduct and to refrain from defamatory speech about specific individuals. Performance-related issues should be addressed in other forums, and we're happy to provide some guidance if necessary. Please refrain from speaking about children who are not your own, except in the event that a FERPA waiver has been signed. And thank you to community members who've taken care of that in advance. We appreciate that. We do request that you please limit your remarks to three minutes. We appreciate your efforts to summarize your comments and concerns. And should there be a need to send us a follow-up communication by email, you're always welcome to do so so that the board can take additional opportunity to review what you've shared with us. I think that brings us to our opportunity to hear from our first speaker. And just bear with me for a moment while I open up the signup sheet. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Great, thank you. And I believe the, that's not today. Hold on just one moment. Bear with me. Okay, I believe the first person is Erica Glick. If you could please introduce yourself to us and let us know where you live and your children in the district, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Is it okay if I take my mask down for this?
Yeah.
Is there a regular?
We're not prohibited from taking our masks off, I think, because of the number of people in the room. You know, I leave it to your discretion. We appreciate you wearing the mask. Thank you.
Of course. My name is Erica Glick. I reside at Kewtona Elementary School. As my home school, my two children go to school outside of the district, however. And I have to say that I'm sorry to be back here again. Prior to the pandemic, I have spent countless hours advocating for change in our school's literacy programs, hopefully educating those not in the know that there is a better way. There's a science of reading supported by evidence, a way for all students to learn to read and write. I spent time informing the Board of Ed in case they were unaware that our current literacy program is not supported by evidence and not supported by science. The program we use has been banned and defunded in several states because it simply doesn't work. It is a failed literacy program. We are literally and figuratively invested in a failed approach. I've requested meetings. I have offered supporting evidence. I've requested more teacher training and professional development. I've suggested the formation of a literacy committee, and I've been provided with lip service. I've been told to look at our high school graduates and the select colleges that they are admitted to. I've been told that this problem isn't a problem. 73% of our fourth grade special education students are not reading at a proficient level, according to the nation's report card, NAEP. Further, 1/3 of our general education students are not reading at a proficient level. I'm here tonight in solidarity to say that all I've asked for is a voice at the table. We, as a district, like to put out a facade that we are a high-performing district. We do things the best. We are a powerhouse. I'm here to say we aren't. All the pats on the back, all the accolades that we give to ourselves, they don't hide our dirty little secrets that we like to keep parents separate. We like to keep them apart so that they don't discover the truth. We like to say that we concentrate our efforts on equity, inclusion, and racial justice. As a district, we've spent countless hours on topics such as our mascot. And until we teach all students to read, we cannot begin to have any higher-level talks about equity or inclusion when our administration keeps evidence-based approaches out of our teachers' hands. That is the grossest social injustice they can perpetuate. Conversely, the science of reading in teachers' hands is the most powerful tool we have to combat inequality by teaching all children to read. You cannot talk about equity and inclusion without talking about literacy because illiteracy breeds inequity. It ensures inequality. If we truly want to improve as a district, we must continue to look honestly at what we are doing. We must never stop learning. We must be transparent. And we must gain back the trust of our parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think next is Matt Goglia on behalf of Victoria Orlick.
My name is Victoria Orlick. I could not be here today because of family circumstances. I am a parent of a 12-year-old boy who has autism, and he is mostly non-verbal. We moved to the district when my son was five years old. I was told that this was a great district for special education students. This is all I ever wanted for my son, to have great teachers who can support him and help him to develop his strengths. I was very happy with his teacher when my son started the K-2 program in inclusive classroom. Just a month ago, I learned that the teacher I liked and trusted was locking children in a bathroom as punishment. Now I will always wonder if my child was punished, too. I will never know, simply because my son cannot tell me. I cannot comprehend the idea that the teacher, who was with the district for years, was doing this to kids. In addition, her paraprofessionals knew and did not report. Did administration know? Why wasn't this teacher investigated? She was retired instead. Now my son is in the classroom where another child was restrained 34 times or more times in March 2021. The parent did not know about the restraints, but administration knew. Why wasn't the parent contacted for days? Most importantly, at what point would someone say, "This is not working, and we need to approach this child differently"? Why would administration hire a teacher who has no experience or training to work with this type of population? It seems to me that the school district is not on the side of protecting our children. When we send our kids to school, whether they are special needs or not, we trust the teachers to take care of our kids. Our kids are the most valuable, most vulnerable population because they cannot communicate or express themselves. They cannot tell us how their day was. We rely on their teachers for the answers. There is right, and there is wrong, and it is not okay what has been going on in our school district. Sincerely, Victoria Orlick.
Thank you, Matt. And if I'm not mistaken, you're also going to speak on behalf of Allison Biddle, and then on behalf of Gina Arena. Thank you.
I'm Allison Biddle. I have two young children at home, and in the next couple of years, they'll be in school. So this issue is important to me. The idea of school authorities putting their hands on any children and not immediately notifying the parent is an outrage. In what kind of world is such an incident not cause for an immediate phone call to the parent? What, may I ask, is possibly higher up on the to-do list of local school officials? Seriously, I want to know. A child is physically restrained after an incident at school. In the minutes and hours that follow, what could be more important than a call to the parent? I support excellence in education. I support an end to restraints and seclusion for special needs students. And I want our school district to lead the way with policies and programs that help our most valuable, most vulnerable students. Installing cameras in self-contained classrooms for minimally and non-verbal students would be an excellent first step. Thank you to everyone speaking out on these important issues for our children.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gina Arena. I am a mother of eight children. Although I am a citizen of Somers, I am an advocate for children with special needs. I have an adult daughter with autism and have other children with disabilities. I am unable to be here tonight, but felt that I needed to speak out to support these parents and help to advocate for what their children have a right to, a free and appropriate education based on the laws. I am disgusted at what I've read and heard about. The blatant and archaic treatment of the special needs students in this school district has brought this district and system backwards and is filled with ignorance about the needs of our very special children. As a parent and citizen that has worked extremely hard to bring awareness to the special needs community for 30 years, I cannot even believe that we are in 2021 and still having this conversation. Special needs children are children, too. When will we realize that they learn different? That is it. If a child without any disability were treated this way, the public would be up in arms. Every child should be safe at school, and every parent should trust that the school could keep their child safe. Sadly, that is no longer the case in this district. The trust needs to be built again for the sake of the families, the district, and especially the children. Every parent of a special needs child should be afforded the time to observe their child in the classroom setting, be involved in the program, as this is very important to the inclusiveness in the home and classroom. And the parent knows their child. Working together will bring about the success of the child. Why not utilize your best resource for this success, the parents and family? I support ending the use of restraints and seclusions in school, installing cameras in self-contained classrooms where students are minimally or non-verbal, providing autism-specific training for staff, more accountability and transparency when an incident occurs, and disability representation at the Office of Special Services level. I truly believe that this district has been given a rare opportunity to take a wrong and work with parents to make a right and become a leader by creating policies that support all children, especially the most vulnerable. Working together will accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gia Miller, please.
Hi, I'm Gia Miller. I have one child at KES and one child at John Jay Middle School. I'm here tonight because I am a parent of two children in this district who receive services through CSE. I am here tonight because one of my children has had a behavioral intervention plan for over three years. And unfortunately, throughout the duration of this plan, teachers and administrators have admitted to not following it. I am here tonight because I've heard way too many stories from way too many parents about that phone call or that email, the one from an administrator in this district that told them their child had been mistreated. And every time I heard someone's story, my heart broke a little more. I am here tonight because professionally, I write about health, mental health, trauma, and parenting. I work with organizations who provide services to people with special needs. I've repeatedly interviewed world-renowned experts and written for highly respected publications, including The Washington Post, Self, Parents, and more. Not once have I ever heard a professional recommend restraining a child, isolating a child, or physically harming a child for non-preferred behaviors. I am here tonight because several years ago, one of my children was forcibly held to the ground against their will by an adult family member. When my child shared what had happened, the school, the state, and the courts got involved. And yet, in this district, when parents were finally notified of what happened to their children, many were told it was a one-time thing or no big deal. And while you may attempt to convince yourself of this so that you can sleep at night, don't. It is a big deal. I've experienced this trauma and emotional pain. These children and families are hurting. They're struggling, and yet they were offered no support, no compassion, no understanding, no apology. I am here tonight because at the last BOE meeting, Dr. Rifkin said that the district is at a disadvantage because you're not allowed to speak. No, sir. These children, the ones who have been harmed at school and aren't able to speak, they are the ones who are at a disadvantage. You, sir, sit in a position of power. All of you sit in a position of power. I am here tonight because, to my knowledge, not a single board member has picked up the phone to ask, "What happened? How are you? How can I make sure that your child is safe at school?" Clearly, you've been advised by your lawyer not to talk to parents. But this isn't about a legal fight. This is about doing the job you were elected to do. It's about human decency, compassion, understanding what's happening under your watch. That's why I'm here tonight. So why are you here tonight? Why did you initially decide to run for a board position or become a school administrator? Are you here tonight because you wanted to help all children? Are you here tonight because you wanted to provide, as Ms. Schiff put it, excellence in every classroom to every child in a compassionate, humane, educational environment? Are you here tonight because you believe that teachers, staff, and administrators should be held accountable for their actions? I know you've been instructed not to answer me, but I do hope you ask yourself these questions. I hope you have an honest conversation with yourself, your spouse, and your friends about why you are here tonight, and if you've become complacent or even complicit. And I hope you ask yourself how you can do better, and then I hope you actually do better.
Thank you. Mark Abrams.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Mark Abrams, and I'm here again. I appreciated Mr. Selesnik's openness to speak with me regarding my concerns about the special education department. I provided him with specific areas that I believe have failed our students and their families. I provided him with specific recommendations for how this school district could work with the families of those involved to create an atmosphere of trust as real changes are implemented. In communicating with a good number of those families, I'm saddened to see no tangible movements towards achieving my suggestions or any of the five changes talked about by many here tonight. The handbook that is given to new board members by the New York State School Board Association states in Section 1.3 that the board conducts performance evaluations of the superintendent to continuously set standards of improvement, leads the district, accentuating and reinforcing the positive while correcting the negative. Most germane is in Section 8.2, which states, "How should the board engage the community? Engage key stakeholders by inviting and appointing them to participate in standing ad hoc committees, advisory panels, focus groups, forums, and surveys to describe the vision for the district, set its goals, plan strategically, align resources with goals, and other actions, offering them an opportunity to learn about public education and to influence governance decisions." Many of us have been questioned by some of you as to the truthfulness of what we have spoken and written about. Clearly, there is mistrust from this administration and this board with the families of those impacted. Clearly, these families don't trust any of you either. When our neighbors in Greenwich, Connecticut, were faced with similar circumstances, the school board was wise enough to hire an outside consulting group. This group did a thorough job and presented the district with a wide This group did a thorough job and presented the district with a wide variety of recommendations. The Greenwich Public School System is now adopting some of those recommendations and are restructuring their entire approach that humane excellence to all students can finally be implemented. Given the major problems that many of us know exist in the Special Education Department, along with the level of mistrust among many of us, I am asking this board to begin the process of bringing in an outside consulting group to do a complete evaluation of this major component in our educational system. I would recommend the group that Greenwich used. I would like this review process to be transparent so that shortcomings are corrected. Those responsible for engaging in or and or covering up for inhumane treatment be removed from their positions of authority. Those who are doing a great job are acknowledged and rewarded for humane excellence. Most importantly, Beth's practices that are both cost-effective and create humane excellence in education be immediately adopted and implemented by our school district. You will get used to seeing and hearing from me in the future because I will not stop in my efforts to see to it that this school district offers cost-effective humane excellence in education to all students. I end by quoting one of my heroes, a survivor of the Holocaust, Auschwitz in particular. This quote comes from Elie Wiesel's acceptance speech for the Nobel Peace Prize in 1986. He said, "I swore never to be silent whenever and wherever humans beings endure suffering and humiliation. We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressors, never the victims. Silence encourages the tormentors, never the tormented." Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe next is Matt Goglia on behalf of Andrea Florian.
It's Golia, the second G as silent.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Board of Education, good evening. I am speaking on behalf of my son who cannot. The Board of Education is keenly aware of the distrust and frustrations the special needs community of KLSD have voiced. We have five simple requests our children deserve. The district can do better and should do better. Better than a child on his first day in a new school being restrained twice, his first day. Ask yourself, is this ethical? For an autistic child, any new experience can be like a first day in a new school. There's a lack of experience and training in the staff of our most vulnerable. Let's fix that. I would like to know who or what failed steps failed that child. What was learned? What is changing? While the BOE, being disadvantaged, cannot respond here tonight, you have had several weeks to respond by acting. Be the example, not the role policy. Thank you, Andrea Florian.
Thank you. And I believe also on behalf of Rhonda Manus.
I think it's Rhonda. My name is Rhonda Manus and I am writing to support parents and all children. I have been a special educator for over 40 years and have always practiced being an advocate for parents and for children. I am heartsick that the system I have lived in for over 27 years and sent my children to has continued to fail those less fortunate, those who cannot advocate for themselves and for the families who have endured such inhumane treatment without knowing. I am for cameras in classroom settings, continuous implementation of strategies and plans, and when they fail, we have failed if we do not come up with a plan that respects all involved. Assessment, training of personnel, ongoing communication with families, and different approaches, approaches until we find the ones that work. As a parent of a child who faced many roadblocks during his time in the district, if I had not been educated about special needs practices and continuous inclusion in the plan, I would have missed so many things which were detrimental to his well-being. This pains me as a parent and as a professional. Families who are not as fortunate to have background knowledge and who rely on a system protect and to protect and nurture their child are at a loss. How do we not include them in the process? Assessment, analysis of plans, support staff, trained and behavioral approaches, and ongoing connection to families is essential. I support the ending of restraints, seclusion, implementation, implementing appropriate training, accountability, and ongoing assessments to see if what we are doing is working. In this day and age, something like this is unimaginable. And it says she has a master's in education, special education, and a master's in counseling psychology. And she's a reading specialist, a parent trainer, and a senior.
Thank you, Matt. And also on behalf of Casey Parish.
My name is Casey Parish and I am the mother of four young children, two of whom attend Increase Miller and one who has an IEP. I'm here tonight because I am shocked and very disappointed, yet sadly not all that surprised to hear about the treatment of special needs children in our district. Every child deserves a safe school environment, one in which their parents should be able to trust the school that's keeping them safe. But it is apparent that this is not the case in our district. I support ending restraints and seclusion in our classrooms, installing cameras in self-contained classrooms where students are minimally or non-verbal, specific autism training for staff, accountability and transparency for incidences that occur, and disability representation at the Office of Special Services. My personal experience with the Office of Special Services has been less than satisfactory. My son, a fully verbal student in a general education classroom, was declassified during his transition from CPSC to CSC. I very clearly stated to the committee that I disagreed with the decision. So did his teacher, neurologist, and all three therapists who treated him through CPSC. However, the district disregarded my and five professionals' recommendations, instead choosing to take a wait-and-see approach. As we all predicted, it wasn't even 10 days into the school year before I received a call from his kindergarten teacher. She explained that the classroom setting was very difficult for my son. And she recommended that we begin the lengthy process of having him reevaluated so that he could receive the support he needs to function in the classroom. Thanks to the district's decision to declassify my son, he had to endure having more evaluations done less than one year after his previous evaluations. After eight months of fighting for my son's needs and hiring a lawyer and advocate, the district reclassified him and put an IEP in place. The district hasn't made it easy for my son to receive proper support so he can reach his full potential. Had the district been proactive instead of reactive, my son would have had a position, a positive first experience in school. Instead, my kindergartner hated school and refused to go. He said he felt he was not smart enough to be at school when the reality was that he simply needed the proper support, something the district spent an entire school year trying to avoid. From my experience, I found that the only way to properly support a child in this district is to hire an advocate or an attorney, and that is absolutely unacceptable. The special education system within our district is broken on so many levels, and it needs to be reexamined in a collaborative setting. Our district must provide a safe, nurturing, and supportive environment for all children, especially the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela and Joe Garofalo.
Adrianne, I'm just gonna take my mask off just so I can breathe a little easier. Good evening. I'm Angela Garofalo here with my husband, Joe. I would like to begin by thanking you for listening in hopes that we can make change together. I'm standing here before you, still choosing to believe we are all on the same side. I'm not here to fight or to argue and hopefully not cry, but to fiercely advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. As a licensed clinical family and child therapist, having completed a master's as well as postgraduate study of the impact of trauma on children, I bring a perspective that is unique. First and foremost, here is a mom of two children, one going into third and one going into fifth. But I can also speak to having worked in an educational setting that provided comprehensive treatment for children with severe emotional issues. Having worked in some of the most highly restrictive levels of care, including a psychiatric hospital and a day-in-residential setting, I can confidently say I know what I'm talking about and I know the protocols that I have seen in place and how valuable they are. In addition to my background, I grew up in a family of educators. My mother retired as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction from BOCES, and my father retired after 25 years of Director of Special Education in BOCES. Granted, this was many years ago, but I know based on all their accomplishments, anything is possible, which makes me feel that KLSD can also make anything possible. The regard I hold for any person who dedicates their life to children is tremendous. Now, having just said all that, I believe we can all agree in any profession, we have people who do not belong or who no longer belong. They may not belong for a variety of reasons. It could be that they started out at the top of their game but eventually burnt out. It could be that they did not keep up with the new studies on how to positively impact change in a student's behavior. It could be that they have not been given the time for trainings for skills that are critical to have with our most vulnerable population. I do not believe anybody would argue that our most vulnerable population are those that can't speak or advocate for themselves. Our son, who is in a self-contained classroom, completely non-verbal and autistic, is one of those children who fall within that category. In early November of 2019, our lives took a turn. As a clinician, I know who is considered the most vulnerable, where abuse and neglect are much more pervasive. But as a mom, I never imagined something like this could happen to our son. When I was called into our son's school, I met by our principal and assistant principal, all I could think is, what in the world could either one of our children have done to be called in? I've never once been called into a principal's office even during my entire life. It became very clear that it had nothing to do with either one of their behaviors. As I'm sitting with the principal holding my hand, the words said, "No parent." Everything seems here. A person in close contact with your child has been removed from the classroom until the investigation over allegations of child abuse is completed. When I found out that our son was hurt, a range of emotions flooded me. To rehash this now, after the money my husband has poured into my therapy and the energy this has taken me to heal, this is the last thing I ever wanted to do. But it's my responsibility to help you understand the vulnerability of our children. I need you to see who we are speaking about. RJ's not an ID number in your system. Yes, Dean. He feels sadness, he feels happiness, and he feels fear, just like every other one of our children here. When I thought this was an isolated incident later, to come find out it was a pattern towards several children. Not a pattern over the course of a week or even a month, but a pattern of behaviors from this staff member over a prolonged period of time. Yes, and I will absolutely say, when the district found out about what happened to RJ, they handled everything properly in regards to RJ, and I will continue to say that. But what I do believe is that there were red flags. There were a lot of red flags. And we need to train all of our staff on what those red flags are. My role has tremendous responsibility, not only to our children, but to all the children out there who don't have a voice. We, as a group, will not stop fighting for them. We are not going away. We have already met with our state assemblyman as well as state senator. Thanks to this amazing advocacy group I'm part of, I know we will make this change. I'm hoping though that we don't have to wait for loss to pass to do what we know is right for our children. This is how we fight abuse and neglect. Cameras in all self-contained special education classrooms, not cameras for the parents to view at any point, but for administration to review after a report is made or just part of the supervision that every teacher requires. Cameras will tell us the story that our children can't end abuse and restraints and seclusion by mandating trainings by the leaders in the field on positive behavioral intervention and not allow for practices that were deemed acceptable 50 years ago to continue. Restraints have killed children and not a technique that that is a go-to as an intervention, that is a go-to intervention. When I worked as a senior clinician, I was trained through Cornell University on TCI, therapeutic crisis intervention. What I know is that we never, ever put our hands on a child unless there is imminent danger. Imminent danger is clearly defined, likely to occur at any moment. It's not what might happen 20 minutes down the line or even one minute down the line. It means what is happening at that very moment or second, and are the behaviors going to get a child seriously hurt or killed? Our son's school knows that if he were to run out of the building, they are to throw themselves down on him because he won't stop. He's not trying to act out. He just has no awareness of danger and he runs to help regulate himself. He won't stop until a car actually hits him. That is imminent danger. I can sadly show examples of what is not imminent danger by what my dear friend's son went through, throwing a cup of water, tossing shoes that led to a restraint. And that is what's documented in reports from the school that were presented to his parents. In addition, it's mandatory for any child who has been restrained to see a medical professional. This is not always happening cases we are aware of. We have a medical doctor on this board and I am sure he would 100% agree with this statement. We also need representation with the administrative level. This perspective is critical. We also need accountability and transparency. I have no doubt that many actions are based on attorney recommendations to the board and to administration. Please, though, what you all have to understand is that parents of like us just want and need to know the full story of our children. We have that right as their parents, especially since our children can't tell us anything. We need to rebuild the trust that has been lost by so many families in the district. We need to hear from you that when mistakes are made, you develop policy in response to those mistakes and implement the policy immediately. We're all human. We all make mistakes and we just have to own it. Isn't that what we teach our children? I'm also adding another ask. Bringing in parents like us to be part of the village that it takes to raise a child like ours. We need a place on your policy teams. We need a place at the table for any team discussion. One of my dearest friends who was here tonight has shared with me that decisions had already been made prior to any discussion with the parents at some of her CSC meetings. Does it take more time to incorporate more people into discussion? Of course it does. But the positive outcome for the child as well as the staff members, as well as the class as a whole, is priceless. We ask for autism-specific trainings. Teachers need to understand that with some students on the spectrum, just gently placing a hand on their shoulder is a trigger, and a child's reaction to that can't be met with punishment. We can't expect our teachers to know this just because they are teachers. They require the training to work with this specific population. Although KLCCC trains their teachers, it's not the correct training. Our group has shared some excellent trainings with administration and based on my last conversation with Andrew, outreach has begun to the professionals in the field. That's fantastic. But at this point, please give us concrete dates. Give us something solid to work with. And when these staff are going to attend these trainings? Next, when our son was hurt, I was so focused on him. I never gave any thought to the students who observed this. The fact that I didn't actually see what happened and it used to wake me up with nightmares at night. I can only imagine what it was like for other kids and staff to see this actually take place. There is a definite way to protect confidentiality and share with There is a definite way to protect confidentiality and share with other parents what their child may have observed. I'm happy to work with you to write this script on how this can be implemented. Put yourself in my shoes and in all of our shoes, and I truly believe that you know our asks are fair and reasonable. You need to do what you know is right. I'm appealing to your human side, not your legal side, not your business side, and not your medical side, but to your human side. Thank you.
Thank you both. Victoria Dedvukaj.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Dedvukaj. I'm the parent of a John Jay Middle School boy that had his classmate restrained thirty-four times. During that time, over those few months, my son began exhibiting behaviors at home that were not consistent with his personality at all. When I called the school to find out if anything happened, or if there was anything new happening at school, I was told, "No." It sickens me to think that they thought this would have no effect on my child just because he couldn't speak. Why am I here tonight? I'm trying to figure out why someone has not met with us in a group regarding our five measures that the board has now had for over six weeks. Measures like extra training and behavior support. Not complicated, pretty simple. We're not asking for the moon. It appears that you don't want to educate, you just want to litigate. Your job security is more important than guiding and protecting our children. That's how you're coming across to us as parents. You're hearing people pour their guts out, and you're failing to meet their needs. And you're at the helm. You need to set an example and be on the right side of history, or move aside for someone else to change history. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Golia, on behalf of Heather Lackey.
On behalf of who?
Heather Lackey.
Dear Katona Lewisboro Board of Education, I am unable to attend the meeting on Thursday, July 29th, but I want to make my voice heard. I'd like to start off by saying that I have two able-bodied neurotypical boys who have been attending Increase Miller. They love it. They love their teachers, they love their principal and the rest of the staff. They love their classes, they love recess, or movement break, as they call it. Our family has had nothing but good experiences with Increase Miller, and personally, I've attended BOE meetings and have been impressed. I'm a very loyal person, and I've been very happy with our school district. So it truly breaks my heart to hear of what has occurred in this same school district. It breaks my heart what has happened to children and families that I know personally, although it would still break my heart even if I didn't know them personally. I currently work for the New York State Assembly, although I am writing this letter strictly in my personal capacity and have had the opportunity to meet with many parents, advocacy groups, and people with developmental disabilities. There are so many devastating stories. From being mistreated to being ignored, there are so many things that are swept under the rug because it seems that people don't care as much about this group of vulnerable people. I'd like to think that our school district is different. I'd like to think that our school district does care and will do all it can to prevent these things from ever happening again. There are things we can try to do on a legislative level, but I'm hoping that our school district won't wait to be forced into action by legislation that couldn't possibly be passed until next year. I'm hoping that our school district will live up to its potential for being a school district that is wonderful and safe for all children. I think that these five things are reasonable and attainable in a school district with the means and determination. One, an end to restraints and seclusion in our schools until a major overhaul is conducted at KLSD. Two, cameras in self-contained classrooms where students are non- or limited verbal. Three, autism-specific training for staff. Four, accountability and transparency, including an immediate self-review by the BOE of these two recent events. Five, disability representation at the OSS level. Katona Lewisboro can be an example of a school district that truly cares about all of its students by creating an environment in which parents can trust that their children will be safe and cared for, even those children that do not have the ability to speak for themselves. It will take time to restore the trust that was broken, but I believe it can be done. Please don't let us down. Sincerely, Heather Lackey.
Thank you, and also on behalf of Simone O'Connor.
Being a parent is the hardest job a person can have. Earning a living along with raising a child is that much tougher. When we leave our children at school with professionals, we believe as they learn, they are safe and in good hands. Having a non- or limited verbal child makes the job of a parent that much harder. You are forced into an area, you are forced into an arena advocating for your child in ways you never expected, yet you jump in because it is not only your responsibility, but you love your child. Having cameras in self-contained classrooms help ease a parent's mind and avoids potential issues in that classroom. An immediate and thorough review of the two recent events needs to take place. We need an end to restraints and seclusion in our schools until a major overhaul is conducted at KLSD, along with autism-specific training for staff. Children are the most precious gifts we have. I do believe most teachers go into this profession to make a positive difference. Asking for accountability and transparency is a basic request. Having to fight for accountability and transparency is shocking. This cannot be an us-versus-them issue. We need to work together and be there for the children, all of us. Simone O'Connor.
Thank you, and Matt, you're next.
Okay, so I read eight letters on behalf of other people. This letter is from me. My name is Matthew Golia, and I live in South Salem, New York. I have two children, a four-year-old girl and a six-year-old who who is autistic and minimally verbal. He goes to Increase Miller, he's in the self-contained classroom. You guys have heard over and over from the letters that I've been reading and others, the five goals that we have this board, along with the superintendent, know what our goals are, and I mean publicly, you've known since June 17th, right? Because if you look at the minutes, that's what's probably in there. However, an argument could be made that you should have known for months because many of us have had, you know, one-on-one talks with the superintendent. I have, I know other members here have. So none of these asks are a surprise. They're even published in newspapers. The time for action is now, okay? Truthfully, the time for action was two years ago, when this board learned of a special education to student who choked a child and threw a child into a wall and locked other children in bathrooms. Then it was time to act when you learned of a twelve-year-old boy restrained thirty-plus times before the parents were ever notified. These are allegations, sorry. These are not allegations, these are facts, okay? So I take offense when they're called allegations here, which this board has done several times. Change is hard, and I understand that. My understanding is most of you are in volunteer positions, you're not paid, and we sincerely appreciate your desire to serve the community and our children. And I mean that from my heart, but you have not satisfactorily addressed these incidents. Tonight, each of you on the board, you need to decide if you are or you aren't up for this task, because change is hard. If you cannot or will not bring change, you need to tender your resignations. Some of you have been here for seven, nine years. Maybe you're a little too comfortable with the status quo, a little too arrogant, too smug, and too close with the paid administration. You haven't even shown the decency to put us on the agenda, so we have to show up en masse and talk to reporters. It can't be comfortable for anyone here. For some of the newer members of the board, I urge you to remind yourselves what made you run for this position in the first place. Remember your platforms of transparency and inclusion. And I invite you, when it's your time to speak later on, to let your voices be heard, so we know where you stand. I'm running out of time, but to the board member who claimed he was at a disadvantage, shame on you. A small child who can't speak because of disability, being choked by a kindergarten teacher or put in a basket hole, that's a disadvantage. Do the right thing. Stop touching our kids until you've overhauled special ed and your philosophy on restraints. Put cameras in any class where kids have no voice. Give staff proper autism training. Be accountable and transparent, and give the R and R family some respect.
Thank you. Shoshana Baran.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Shoshana Baran. I'm the mother of two children who attend KES, and I'm a clinical psychologist. I'm here tonight because I'm shocked and disappointed at what I've read and heard about the treatment of children with special needs in our school district. I recognize that difficult situations can occur and hope that we can work together as a community in good faith to better support our most vulnerable members. In addition to being a parent in the district, I'm a clinical psychologist in private practice. I earned my doctoral degree from George Washington University and have been in clinical practice for almost a decade. I'm a strong advocate for people of all ages with special needs and disabilities. During my studies, I worked at the Children's National Medical Center in DC, conducting neuropsychological evaluations to children on the autism spectrum. In 2012, I developed an integrated summer camp program for children with special needs at Stanford JCC. At that time, I was also working at the Children's Village in Dobbs Ferry and was trained in therapeutic restraint and provided therapy to residents and worked with their school to implement positive behavioral interventions and supports. I've evaluated and treated countless children adolescents who are neurodiverse and have attended a number of IEP and 504 meetings for those families, as well as for my own son. Currently, I specialize in working with adolescents and adults with chronic disabilities, illness, and pain. I wholeheartedly believe that every child should be safe at school and that every parent should be able to trust that the school will keep their child safe. I support critically evaluating the use of restraints in our schools, outlining clear criteria for when a restraint is necessary for the safety of a child or those around them. I understand that sometimes restraint is necessary, but we need to have clear guidelines for that. I support the installation of cameras in self-contained classrooms where students may be minimally or non-verbal. I support and encourage autism-specific training for our staff. I support accountability and transparency when an incident occurs. I support disability representation within our Office of Special Education. And I believe the district needs to develop clear guidelines that can be communicated to families about how they determine when an out-of-district placement is necessary and appropriate. There may be some students that our district just isn't capable of teaching, and we need to recognize that. I recognize that these improvements require time, money, support, and a willingness to embrace change. But by implementing these changes, you can expect a safer, more effective learning environment for all students and staff that feel more confident and prepared to meet the needs of all students. Human excellence in education is a right that should be afforded to every student, regardless of their circumstance. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Deborah Golia.
Good evening, everyone. I need to start my letter by honoring Oxana for her bravery in telling her story in the last Board of Education meeting. It was painful for me to hear, and all I could think was that it could have been my son. I cannot imagine how traumatic it has been for Oxana and her family, and I thank you for your courage and strength. I wish it was not true, but we all know it's real. And the problem is that Oxana's son was not the only child abused at KLSD. Over the years, some parents have had to leave the district because their concerns were never taken into consideration. Like Oxana, I am the mom of a child who cannot express himself in words. He cannot tell me how his day at school was, but he's a terrific learner, and he shows progress when he's surrounded by capable staff that understands his needs. My concern is with the lack of training and refresher trainings to remind the staff that there are many ways to prevent behavior and identify when a child is steaming and to approach it correctly to avoid psychological and emotional stress. In an interview with The Record Review, a former KLSD 121 aide confirmed how common it is for the staff to jump into work without any previous training. When she pointed out to the director of special education, she was told, "Do not worry." I was shocked to read that. Ignoring the problem will not make it go away. It seems the annihilation is giving to safety. With proper training and information, staff will not only have the ability to deescalate a situation, but also to respond to crises in a safer and more effective way. There is a lot of work to do. We need to stop moving by inertia and undermining progress. Our special needs students need more respect. In the same article of The Record Review, Laurie Ledd said that "Parents now feel they must bring an advocate or lawyer into a CSE meeting, and it's tragic." I had this experience as well. I felt that if I had not paid for an advocate, my son would not have gotten the services he needed. It is sad and highlights the failure of special education. The focus should be in providing needed services, not by postponing help. What is the reason for denying services? Is it because of cuts in the budget in the form of understaffing special education? It does not seem to me that it's been beneficial to the students or the community. Hearing other parents talking about serious incidents in the self-contained classes in the district just increases my own concerns about the safety of my son and others in the community that, like him, cannot defend themselves. The district should install cameras in the self-contained classrooms. Anywhere that a child does not have a voice should have a camera. I strongly believe we can work together to assure a safe environment for all. That is the reason why I'm here today in agreement with other parents that are raising their voices, searching for more transparency for the school district, transparency that will require action. When families and schools collectively agree upon their goals and decide how to reach them, everyone benefits. Unfortunately, I have not seen any initiative or implementation of change. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Raffel.
Hi, my name is Amy Raffel, and I'm a parent with children in the district. Please bear with me, I struggle with public speaking, and I really wish I didn't need to be here tonight. It is frustrating and honestly incomprehensible to watch families whose children were abused, witnessed abuse, or were at risk abuse identify and articulate problems in our district and carefully research and propose practical and reasonable strategies to improve safety, only to be ignored and dismissed repeatedly by this board. These problems were and are foreseeable and preventable. And in fact, I understand the board has a practice of tracking issues in school districts all across the US and certainly must be aware of the widespread abuse of special education students, as well as the harm caused by the inappropriate use of physical restraints. So it is hard to imagine that you were unaware of the potential for abuse and harm in our self-contained classrooms. But certainly when you learned it was happening, the need to do something should have been obvious. Instead, the district has taken a short-sighted, reactive stance focused on closing ranks and attempt to limit its immediate exposure. And the board has failed to demonstrate even minimal curiosity to understand what is happening. Honestly, it is inconceivable to me to hear of a child being restrained thirty-four times and be able to view that as anything other than a systemic failure. I cannot understand how the board has not made this its top priority or fails to see the risks that exist here. Crisis intervention and de-escalation is the end. It's not the beginning. When a child is being physically restrained, many things have gone wrong and many opportunities have been missed long before they ever got to that point. A physical restraint is an inflection point which requires immediate study and analysis as to what led up to it and how to prevent it from happening again each and every time it happens. Similarly, physical abuse of any student in our schools should trigger an immediate and exhaustive review of the incident as well as identifying the weaknesses in our system to prevent, detect, and report it. I've wondered what the actual cost in dollars is when services for special education are delayed or denied or when plans are not followed and situations are mishandled. Are we really spending our money wisely? Do our costs for legal fees, settlements, and out-of-district placements increase as the special education budget is cut? Are there related increases in staff costs due to injuries? According to the district's budget book online, we've paid about eleven and a half million dollars over a five-year period from 2015 to 2020 in tuition to other schools. Do we know how many of these students had to go out of district as a direct result of the district's actions? And as a board member, how would you know whether the district caused those placements? What happens when the next child is subjected to an inappropriate and traumatic restraint? What if they are harmed physically or even die? What if there is another instance of physical abuse in a self-contained class? I imagine the district is going to be in a rather difficult position when these problems have been so well documented, changes have been proposed, and the district has failed to do anything. As taxpayers, we will all be paying for it, but more importantly, the harm done to these children and their families will be lasting and irreparable. I hope you're finally hearing us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope Turbert.
Good evening. My name is Hope Turbert and I am the parent of an incoming kindergartner in the district. He will be attending the self-contained class at Increase Miller in September. He is autistic and non-verbal. I am also a proud alumna of this school district and I was shocked to learn how this district has been treating our most vulnerable students. As we all know, earlier this year, a parent in our community discovered that their non-verbal autistic child had been physically restrained nearly three dozen times in two months. Despite the near daily occurrence of these physical holds, the district failed to notify the parents. This child had no way of telling their parent what was happening to them. Imagine for one moment that this is your child I'm talking about. Administration in this district clearly and purposefully chose to keep this information from this child's parents for two whole months, and there is simply no excuse for this. The other students in this class witnessed these traumatic events day in and day out, and their parents were kept in the dark as well. Nobody could help these children process the trauma of what they had to witness because the only people who knew about it were keeping it a secret. The administrators, teachers, staff, who were involved in this situation must be held accountable and this Board of Education must actively and immediately pursue change. It appears that sweeping issues under the rug has become a common practice in this district. In recent years, it was discovered that an Increase Miller special education's teacher had been abusing her non-admittedly verbal students in her kindergarten through second grade class. This occurred in the same classroom that my child is going into in the fall. This teacher was allowed to leave quietly and life went on. PTA meetings, field day plays, concerts, assemblies, bake sales. Administration and the Board of Ed did not talk about the abuse that had taken place under our noses. Nothing was done to address the trauma these childrens and their families were facing. Families were left to suffer in silence as the board pretended nothing happened. It is time to address the trauma that has occurred here. Hiding behind legal technicalities and allowing your attorneys to dictate how you speak to us and treat us is disgusting, especially when it is about our children. If you are not a part of the solution, you are a part of the problem. The special ed program in this district is inherently broken. Trust is broken. How do we even begin to fix this? Maybe a good first step is to stop othering our autistic children and to start treating them with the respect and dignity they deserve. Our requests are pretty simple. Training to promote autism acceptance, cameras in classrooms where students cannot speak for themselves, a clear policy that limits physical restraint to life-threatening situations and require parental notification the same day. Accountability, transparency, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Serge Muniz.
Good evening. My name is Serge Muniz. I'm the father of Lev Muniz, who you all probably if not know that at least heard about. And I'm here tonight for a few reasons. I'd like to tell you why and everything I say afterwards is going to fall off of that. So one of the reasons is my son joined the school district in February and we had to pull him out of the school district two months later. And everybody heard the story being recited about the restraints and everything else. My view on this is much simpler than this. He was a student in a public school in another school district in Westchester for seven and a half years, never requiring a protective hold or any restraint of any kind. He's for two weeks in another school now. Not a single restraint there either. So my view of this is very simple. If all you have is a hammer, every problem is a nail. I, a couple of weeks ago, I think, I had an opportunity to view the only video that was preserved of the protective hold, we called that. That actually happened outside of the classroom in the hallway. There were several instances where the hold happened outside of the classroom. However, that's the only video that school preserved and you were able to see it, me and a state police officer who was investigating the abuse claim that I filed with the local office. And just to be clear, when I saw the video, I saw my son running out of the classroom, his teacher catching up with him, giving him the basket hold. And this was all very well choreographed, if I may use that. And there were six or seven people involved altogether. It was happening in the hallway. They all knew what they were doing. The basket hold was happening on the floor. He was sitting down. It was holding my son. Two more people were holding his legs. Two people were in a standby with a wheelchair, I assume, because sometimes after a hold like that, he can pass out and he would not be able to walk back and they would will him back in the classroom. Later that day, this happened, this was continuing for ten minutes. Later that day, I got a call around noon, I believe, that my son fell asleep in the classroom. And at the time, we did not know how many holds were there total. We just knew this was the second hold of that week that we knew about. So technically, we knew about the thirty-third hold. We were told about thirty-third hold without knowing it was number thirty-three. We thought it was number one. So I came, got him, and he never went back. I do not have any data in this public speech I'm giving now. To me, it's mostly to thank people who are here as a result of what happened, but they also understand that this is bigger than just one student and one teacher and one classroom and special ed. And maybe even bigger than our school district because there's all kinds of legislation and works that require cameras and everything else. The way I see it is the problem is much bigger than this. I went through stages of being angry with the teacher, then being angry with the assistant of special ed, then with special ed, then I spoke to Mr. Selesnik, who assured me everything is great and nothing needs to be changed. To me, this school district failed my son because you took a student who came from another school district of seven and a half years of experience and you made him completely inadmissible to another school. In fact, we struggled when we did parental placement after school exhausted any potential day program within a certain radius. We only found one school that was willing to take it. And we really had no choice. We strongly believed that he needed to be in a day program. We do not think he belongs into a residential program at this time. Things may change, but at this time, we enjoy having him at home. He's a very sweet little boy. He's thirteen. He's very relatable. He's a very severely autistic child nevertheless. He doesn't speak. He doesn't chew. He has multiple sensory issues. He has OCD, obsessive compulsive disorder, where he has to execute certain rituals and certain repetitive actions just to soothe himself because of the anxiety of him being in this world. That's before any hold were even applied to him. He was like that. And the way I see it and where the school failed him, you know, multiple levels. They were trying to reach out to school. We bought the house in September last year. And because of the COVID, we had to do some renovation in the house and we couldn't move until February, actually, this year. That's why he got transferred. So since September last year, there were several attempts being made to contact special education because we had never transferred him before from one school to another. So we figured it's a big deal and he's a very severely autistic child. We were very surprised that there was no interest in contacting or engaging with us early on, like, you know, having neither school district exhibited any desire to learn about the student beforehand. The acceptance into the school district and the, actually, the judgment on whether the program that you have in this school district is appropriate for this student or not was really not considered. I mean, he was just taken in and whatever the classroom was there, it's a self-contained class. I mean, that should work because that's the only one we have. No one took the time to read his IEP, to speak to the old school district, to understand what he really is, what his problems and needs are, and make a determination whether this is the right, appropriate program or not. By the way, it's kind, to me, it's kind of obvious that the program is not appropriate for him, but nevertheless, no school official ever verbally said it clearly, just like that, says, "Sorry, we do not have an appropriate program for this student in this school district." Because in my opinion, as I was watching the video of his restraint, one thing I understood all of a sudden, I sat with him through all the remote sessions later after that happened. And I realized that the teacher was much better at performing the hold than he actually is at teaching an autistic student. And that should tell you why he resorted to hold before any other options. We were exhausted.
Going to ask you to please let us know, are you almost finished, Mr. Muniz?
I am almost finished.
Great, thank you. We'll ask you to kindly wrap up your remarks.
So to me, our honored board members and superintendent, I don't think you have much choice here because bad things will happen as a result because your program is sloppy. And you have a choice of either making the necessary changes. This whole special ed program you have should be audited just like you audit your financials because you trust people who are there that they're doing the right thing. None of you really are familiar with autism as a diagnosis and special education intricate detail because you're not special education consultants or specialists. I understand that. And you rely on other people telling you what those requirements and needs are. But the truth is, I'm telling you, the people you have are not doing a good job. This is, I'm speaking from my personal experience here. But I have no doubt that that's what my experience is. So if the program cannot be salvaged and cannot be audited, reformed, and changed so that it works like a well-oiled machine, you have to shut down this program. It cannot exist in its form because more students will get traumatized psychologically and potentially you're opening yourself to a multiple lawsuits and/or a much more serious incident than just my son passing out after a hold. Like it was indicated by other parents previously, some students to whom the holds were applied would possibly have a severe reaction and die. And that would not be good, I think. It would not look good on our school district. All of us here, we're paying taxes. I don't know how many board members actually are residents of Catona Lewisboro School District, but obviously, most of us parents who have our children in this school district, we are. And we are stakeholders in this. And we want to make sure you're doing the right thing. And so far, all of my experience by speaking to special education, Mr. Selesnik, addressing the board before in writing, all I hear is that no changes need to be made. Everything is great. And I'm telling you here now that it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz Mailman.
My name is Liz Mailman. I have two children at Increase Miller. I would like to begin by saying how disappointed I am to be here. As Septo VP and as a concerned parent, I have met with the head of special services and the superintendent many times about the special ed issues in KLSD. Each time I was listened to, but I saw no action. This group of parents and concerned community members have been very clear on not only what the problems are, but how to fix them and keep all our kids safe. Mr. Selesnik, you've told me in the past that if parents have an issue to go up the chain, well, here I am, all the way up the chain to the Board of Ed. My name, I already introduced myself, but my name is Liz Mailman and I have two children at Increase Miller, one who is autistic and in a self-contained class. My daughter is limited verbally. She cannot tell me about her day, good or bad. It takes a lot of trust to drop her off at Increase Miller every day. And over the past five years, my trust has been broken. My daughter was in class with the teacher who was retired. She was in that class for three years, my daughter. This teacher was allowed to retire after she abused at least five children that I'm aware of. And I don't say that as an allegation. You know, I spoke to these parents and I know this happened. Well, I'm glad that this teacher was swiftly removed from the classroom and thank God for the aides who came forward and potentially saved lives of children, including my own. She was a teacher at this district for years. I ask that the investigation into her actions go back years and not months. We, the parents of non-verbal kids, deserve to know what happened while our children were under her care. There are aides who work in this district now who know what my daughter and others like her may have been subjected to or witnessed. Imagine how you would all feel if you were in this situation. You would be terrified of what may have happened to your child and your trust would be broken. You would be reluctant to send your child back to that school as I am. I am doubly concerned because I did notice warning signs for years. As I said, my daughter was in that class for three years. The most glaring sign, and I struggle to share this because I am ashamed that I did not pursue it further at the time, is that I witnessed my daughter's aide, her aide at that time when she was in K through two, she's now going into fifth. her aide at that time when she was in K through two, she's now going into fifth. I witnessed my daughter's aide yank her by the arm hard twice. I spoke to the teacher, of course, this is the teacher who we later found out was abusive and has been asked to retire. The principal I spoke with and a handful of others up the chain about this. But oh, I did not speak with Mr. Selesnik about it at the time, but he is aware now. But ultimately, I was convinced by all of them not to make a complaint, which they said would ruin the life of the aide, so nothing was done. This aide worked with that teacher for years. Additionally, many parents have noticed a lack of inclusion in KLSD. This is something I have personally been fighting for for my daughter since day one. Although her needs do require that she be in a self-contained classroom, she should have the opportunity to engage in meaningful social interaction with her peers on a daily basis. How will she learn to be more social if she's never given the opportunity? I have brought this up at CSE meetings and to every staff member that has ever worked with my daughter over the years. They agree. But little or no action has ever been taken. For example, this past June, she was left out of the fourth grade celebration in Increase Miller. I was told that the children didn't even get to mingle with other classes anyway. However, I know this to be false. My family is in an interesting position as we have twins. I know my son went to that celebration. He had a great time and he came home with signatures in his yearbook from friends in other classes. So he got to mingle while my daughter did not. This is not about specific children or specific teachers, but about changing district-wide policies and re-establishing, re-establishing the trust that has been lost. Stop seclusion and restraint. Bring cameras into self-contained classrooms, which will keep kids and teachers alike safe. Require autism-specific training and demand accountability and transparency of your teachers and staff, including a self-review of all recent incidents at Increase Miller and John J. Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Melman.
Hi, my name is Jared Melman. My wife just spoke to our personal experiences, so I'm not going to dwell on that. I'm here tonight mostly in support of the parents that are here speaking out and for parents that aren't here that are living similar situations to us. I'm also here because I'm tired. I'm tired of fighting. If your primary goal is to provide a safe and appropriate education for our children, why do we have to fight so hard for that? You know, I'm here in support to end restraint and seclusion, to force transparency and accountability to teachers that are involved in administration involved in incidents. And that's about it. Thank you.
Oksana Aronov.
Good evening. Interesting night tonight. I think you're finding, ladies and gentlemen of the board, yourselves at pretty sharp odds with your community, the very community whose interests you're supposed to champion, the very community for who you're supposed to provide equity and justice. This community is communicating to you and has been for a number of months now that they are experiencing inequity and injustice. And it is very telling to me, and this has been the theme in all of the comments so far, and has been a theme in comments for a number of weeks now, that your response, both the administrations and the boards, has been, no, 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 if we could just go blow by blow, you'll see everything is actually great. No one did anything wrong. This program is great. When my husband and I came into this district, Mr. Superintendent knows, we were quite vocal about the fact that this program, the special education program at KLSD is broken. And you have heard that today over and over again, based on a number of different experiences. And while you may think that being at odds with us here today, being in this hot seat is because the parents are unhappy. It is not the parents that have brought you here. It is the administration, both of the district and of the special education program, that has failed you and brought you here. And the reason they have failed you is one word, indifference. There is grandiose indifference here to the children that are in this special education program. This difference was truly grandiose in my son's experience of being restrained repeatedly and having his educational experience turned into one long emergency with no notification to the parents. This indifference was also on grandiose display with the experience of another student who was assaulted and an unknown number of students that were abused by a teacher over a course of years. But this indifference shows itself in a lot of subtle nuanced ways when parents have to fight for basic things and when they know that unless they bring an advocate or an attorney to that fight, they will not get what their, what their child needs. Is this the district that you want to have? Is this what you want for the children of this district? For parents to believe that unless they bring an attorney, unless they can afford to bring one, the district will always have the upper hand. That indifference is incompetence. That indifference is what needs to be rooted out. This program is broken. It doesn't work. And I think when we communicate that to you, it is the ultimate irony of ironies, Dr. Rifkin, that you feel yourself at a disadvantage because you cannot speak legally when what's at stake are children who often cannot speak literally. It sucks to not to be able to explain yourself, doesn't it? It sucks to not to be able to say, hey, this is why I'm acting this way, or this is why I'm communicating or not. A little glimpse into the world of those children. This program must be reformed. And we have spent an enormous amount of time, energy, which frankly, we do not have, because it is a full-time job understanding that world. But we have spent the time because we adore our children. And yet, none of you have picked up the phone and asked us for our input. Not the administration, not the special education, not anyone on this board. Instead, we're being offered training routinely. And I understand that the law mandates it, but really, do you think anyone here knows any less than the psychologist at this school who was present at my son's restraint, but didn't think it was important to pick up the phone and call me? That is a farce. So it is really time to work together to reform this broken program. If you can be part of that change, be part of that change. If you can't be part of that change, it is time to change you. And that goes for members of this board, this administration, and most certainly, the special education administration in this school. Thank you.
Alexa Ferreira. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you everyone for coming out tonight. I'm just going to ask you to imagine, if you will, that you're a parent, that you're innocent, disabled, utterly helpless child was restrained by two or three or up to nine adults for seven, eight, 10, even 20 minutes. And then sent home without a word, day after day. Imagine that. Now imagine you are a child in the room or classroom. What do you hear? You hear the aide tell your classmate to stop flapping his hands. Quiet hands, calm body. You watch as your friend, deprived of his means of self-comfort, begins to dysregulate. His distress is clear. It grows. And then you watch. You cannot look away as it begins again. As he stands there, two staff members take hold of your friend, one on each side. They keep their legs in front of his. And as he cries out, they force him to bend forward at the waist, pushing his head for his knees. When you go home that afternoon, your mother asks you about your day, even though she knows you cannot respond. But you do respond. Your sleeplessness, your sudden and uncharacteristic anger, the disappearance of your brilliant smile, the unexpected return of your seizures, all speak thinly, those who love you. What is wrong, my child? My name is Alexa Fer and my son is in that class, the class in which a child was restrained three or four times without notice to his parents. I appreciate the statements the board made last meeting, the effect that the board is conducting research and analysis and is doing things that many may not be visible to us to address these issues. I understand irritation expressed by the board members. We parents are indeed impatient for answers and help. So I want to first say that we are, we are, what we're asking you to discuss here is what you're doing to make our children safer. We're asking you to address the goals stated in our letters. The law does not mandate that plans for reform must be perfect. And I do understand that such research and analysis cannot be rushed. And I would like you to understand the reason for our impatience. The board has many important matters to consider. And as the board is occupied with these matters, our children are still in that class. I think all of us agree that there are times when restraint is necessary. That's a fact. But what is also universally agreed upon and what is very much emphasized in CPI literature is that restraint is dangerous. In fact, CPI goes so far as to say that the only truly safe restraint is the one that never occurs. Given this, I have spent the last three months racking my brain to imagine a version of the events that happened in my son's class that is reasonable, appropriate. But all I can come up with is that either these events did not meet the criteria for physical restraint and emergency intervention. Or there were 34 emergencies in my son's classroom in each week. There is no version of that that doesn't reflect on the teachers and members. And yet, my son was under the care of those very staff members today, today. Those same failed behavior support practices and methods continue to be used in his classroom. Staff are still using the very same practices that created a situation they could not control and are still acclimated to a culture that encouraged secrecy over the uncomfortable truths that could have protected our children. For this reason, we are impatient. And we do not believe our children are safe. We are impatient because our pleas to administration have been politely redirected to the very staff members who were involved in these failures. And what those conversations have revealed about classroom practices has been deeply unsatisfying, even disturbing. I've asked an administrator if she could explain to me how an administrator could reasonably make these decisions. And conversations with us administrators have called these actions mistakes and errors, but they were not. They were decisions. Decisions to continue day after day, to conceal the fact that the classroom was out of control, to conceal the restraints themselves, to conceal the examinations made by the nurse, to conceal the trauma to which the child witnesses were exposed. I've asked her to explain, but she could not. So you see why we're impatient. There's no time. There's no time. I'm asking you as a mother, I'm asking you, the most senior officers of this district, to take action, real action, the kind that we can see today, night, now, to protect my child and to protect all the disabled children.
Thank you. Was anybody else waiting to speak this evening? Please feel free to introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here again in person tonight because I think it's important you see the faces and hear the voices of parents directly affected by the decisions that you make.
May I ask you to please state your name for the public record? Thank you.
For those of you who I have not met, my name is Meredith Black. And I'm the parent of a second grader and incoming kindergarten at KES as well as a fifth grade student. Of my three children, two are dyslexic. For them, this diagnosis has meant they have struggled to learn to read. While both have been identified as being learned disabled, their experiences in this district were vastly different. My older child wasted a year in RTI before her diagnosis and another year in resource room with very little progress. So little, in fact, that on several occasions, I was told that with respect to a second grader, that not all children are meant to go to college. At the end of second grade, she was barely a beginning first grade reader with no plan by the school via or the IEP team to help her become a grade level reader because she was dyslexic. In contrast, my middle child, identified and given an IEP upon entering kindergarten because of a disability in the area of reading, i.e. a diagnosis of dyslexia, received resource room immediately. However, that quick identification and classification was just one part of why he is now considered an on-grade reader at the end of first grade. See, the difference for both my children in ultimately becoming readers was the use of a multi-sensory structured scientifically-based reading program. For my daughter, this program was implemented in the third grade at Winward. And for my son, this program was implemented in the first grade in resource room by the only teacher in the district with training in the scientifically-based program which she received from her prior employment. Today, my daughter is a mid-fourth grade level reader with anticipated growth of achieving grade level reading by next year. For my son, after just six months on this program, he is considered an on-grade, average-level reader entering second grade in the fall. In both instances, the differences in learning to read was made by teachers who were using a program based on the science of reading, not speculation and not experience. My children's experiences are not unlike those of other struggling readers. Our children can learn how to read. They just need appropriate instruction in the manner in which their brains need to be taught. Tonight, I know that you've heard many parents with concerns regarding the care and instruction of children with special needs because their experiences are, as mine shows, that our children are not capability, capable of necessarily understanding what they need or how their needs should be met. That is supposed to be the job of our teachers and administrators. Sadly, in many instances, our teachers have not received sufficient training in the educational needs of our children and the science behind the programs and strategies needed to assist them. Tonight, I continue to make my plea to you and the administration to look closely at how the needs of our most vulnerable students are addressed. In the area of reading, based on my personal experience, I can tell you that despite the district's continual investment in reading programs, our most vulnerable students still lack sufficient reading instruction. With a mere 70, with 73% of our students with disabilities in the fourth grade meeting are considered below basic readers. That means their instruction in kindergarten through first grade is not teaching them how to read. This is not acceptable. Not when the majority of students, including those with disabilities, can be taught to read at grade level. That is what the science says. But that requires a willingness to understand the science of why children struggle to learn to read and how their brains, brains need information to be presented. There's a theme in the testimony given tonight and in all the previous presentations of parents over the last several years regarding reading instruction. That is that this district needs to be open to change. Transparency is needed in decision-making. Professionals need to be consistently informed of best practices in their respective fields and educational programming. Teachers need to be given appropriate training to implement the programs and tools selected by the administration. And the district needs to openly communicate and include parents in the education and care of our children. Those are requests that have been made by parents over the last several years with regard to special education and different needs of different students. It continues to be repeated tonight. And I don't think it's unfair. And I don't think it's unfair to ask as taxpayers and as the parents of children in this district that those needs and wants be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And was anybody else waiting to speak tonight? If not, thank you so very much to all of you for taking the time to be here this evening, for speaking with us. As many of you know already, and for those of you who don't, we won't be engaging in back and forth right now, but in just a short while, we will have opportunity for board dialogue. And thank you for your patience as we just move forward with the rest of the agenda in the meantime. This brings us to 10.01. I'm not aware of any questions or comments on the consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Thank you, Julia. Seconded by Ilana. Thank you. Are there any questions, clarifying questions or comments? Okay, if not, thank you for all of the work that went into developing the consent agenda for tonight. And we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's six zero. I believe this brings us to an opportunity to recognize the gift. I'll move the resolution for 15.01. This is a generous gift in the amount of $650.69 from Stop &amp; Shop A+ School Rewards. The recipient is Increase Miller Elementary School. Would somebody please second the resolution? Thank you, Liz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Six zero. Thank you very much. And thank you to Stop &amp; Shop School Rewards for the generous donation. And this does bring us now to an opportunity to reflect and discuss what has been shared with us tonight in public forum and to visit any topics that board members may have brought with them this evening. On behalf of the board, certainly, I want to reiterate our thanks to all of you for continuing to speak with us, for providing insight into your own children's experiences, for your courage and bravery and your willingness to share pain that you've been living with. We want to acknowledge that. Certainly, we view it as our responsibility to not only ensure the safety of every child, but to advocate effectively and consistently and responsibly for each of your children. So I feel the need to state that expressly. I would hope that that's something that can be trusted by every community member, but we certainly hear from all of you that trust has been eroded significantly and needs to be restored. We appreciate your reiteration of that message this evening. I do wish to also add that we work hard to foster a culture of responsibility and respect that does necessarily prioritize the integrity and privacy of every child and every staff member. This does create boundaries on certain matters and how we are able to discuss them in open meetings. That can lead to an incomplete picture at times, and that can be frustrating. But I hope you will allow us to provide reassurance that every single instance allegation of child abuse in an educational setting that is brought to any one of our attention at any time, including here tonight in this meeting. And as you all know, at the June 17 meeting, where our superintendent followed up with several of you the very next day, those allegations are prioritized, taken with the utmost seriousness of purpose and are investigated to completion and to the satisfaction of the Board of Education. I can newly imagine how frustrating and challenging it is at times to not necessarily be apprised fully of the results of these investigations and findings. And I'm sorry that there I don't have a lot to offer by way of illumination or completing a picture for those of you who feel that you've been left wanting a certain sense of closure. And I thank you for sharing how painful it has been to live with the absence of that closure. We couldn't believe more strongly, and here I hope that we are on common ground, that it is our number one responsibility to create trustworthy conditions in which each of your children can be successful and that safety is just a necessary precondition for success. It is our experience with our superintendent and his cabinet and our staff that they have worked tirelessly and on a daily basis to foster an ongoing learning environment in which professional learning and humility, that none of our programs is perfect, is expected and that we are all here to learn every day from each other, from experts, from best practices, from neighboring districts. And we are listening very carefully to what you are sharing with us. I can't speak for my board colleagues in this regard, but I'm going to speculate that they will agree with me when I say that to our ears, some of these five requests are not simple. I appreciate and respect that from your perspective, they are. I'm not sure that I can agree that these asks are simple. I do want to apologize for any miscommunication on your part or negligence on our part in not having reached out to call any of you directly. When we hear from members of the community in this forum, we respect your right to speak with us in our business meeting. This is the board's opportunity to conduct business a couple of times a month or once a month in the summer. And we are listening. We do very much appreciate your research and your willingness to share your perspective on what I would refer to as strategies to keep children safe. I believe our goal is the same as yours, to keep every child safe as a necessary precondition to success and so that every child can reach his or her human potential in our school district. As to the strategies you've suggested to keep children safe, we rely and trust on our educational experts to help us to understand how do we best keep children safe. And I think at this point, because I certainly don't mean to monopolize our board dialogue, I will pause at the risk of being, you know, having monopolized the floor. And please, I invite my board colleagues to share their thoughts, invite our administrators to share their thoughts and reflections on what we've heard and the way forward.
I'd certainly like to echo some of Marjorie's comments. Certainly to thank you all for coming tonight. It is very important for us to hear your voices. We have been listening very carefully these past weeks as we always do. I've reached, as Marjorie said, I've reached out to some of you. I heard it said tonight, I heard it implied tonight, that perhaps I did that because I don't trust what was said at the board meeting. And I'd like to make clear that that's absolutely not the case. When I reached out to individuals, it was to better understand some of the things that had been said in the letters that were read or said at meetings. I have an obligation in some cases to better understand some of the things that were said. And I appreciate those people who have responded to my requests in that regard. And I continue to reach out, to ask for communication. I heard it said tonight also how important it is that we work together. And I couldn't agree more with that phrase. And are there complicated ways in which we sometimes have to work together? Yes, there are. Doesn't mean we don't want to. Certainly doesn't mean we don't care. I want to echo also what Marjorie just said, that the five, you've referred to them as goals that you've laid out, so many of you have laid out tonight. Some may seem simple, some may seem complicated. Even the comment, the line about restraint and seclusion, we heard it phrased in many different ways tonight. We heard some acknowledge that, we heard some say that it should never be present in schools, restraint and seclusion. I can say tonight that children are not secluded in our schools. They are not secluded in our schools. Restraint is far more complicated, which is echoed by some of the phrases you heard tonight from parents who said it should never happen, to others who said it sometimes needs to happen, to other comments that were in between. It is complicated. We absolutely want all children to be safe at all times. That drives our work. It also drives me to continue to invite some of you into conversation so that we can continue to better understand each other, always with the goal of improving. That is always our goal, to improve. I wish it were easy. It's not easy. I've met with some of you who have acknowledged how complicated it is. And I appreciate that. Doesn't mean we don't continually work towards improvement continually. But most importantly, hearing your stories tonight and in the previous weeks is powerful. And I want you to hear that and know that we care very deeply for your children, all of them. And it is important to us to hear directly from you. Sometimes I ask you to come and meet with me or meet with some of us in my office because we want to hear more. And we need to hear. Again, as Marjorie has said, I thank you for coming tonight. We have taken, we are taking some steps already. We know we need to take more. We are already working on training, as was referenced even by one of our parents earlier tonight. We know there's more of that work ahead and we will continue. And I look forward to having more conversations with many of you in the days and weeks ahead.
I'd add, please, Liz, I don't mean to interrupt.
I just wanted to also say thank you to all of the community members who came to speak tonight. It's really, I think, very important to meet and see each other face to face and really hear from people about their experiences and continue this dialogue. And I do acknowledge that sometimes it can be frustrating to not feel like an issue has been wrapped up. But I do want to also encourage everyone to continue to reach out to the administration and to the board because I think that we are all very open to meeting with people and talking to people and really understanding. I do know that, you know, there are things that we cannot say, but when, you know, we did, as a member of the policy committee, we did a couple of revisions of the policy based on feedback from the community. And so I don't want certain things to get lost. That we are interested and willing and believe it is incredibly important to work with all members of our community. I think we all believe that all students should be safe in school, absolutely. And I just, I want to say once again, thank you for coming in person and just to encourage everyone to continue talking because I think that's how we solve problems.
I'm sorry, but no, I apologize. We're not going to engage. Pardon me, I'm sorry. This is our board dialogue. This is not an opportunity, pardon me. This is not an opportunity to correct the public record. We are not going to engage in a back and forth. We respect that you-
This is not about back and forth. This is about establishing what was said before. The children were locked in bathrooms. Mr. Superintendent said that children in this district are not secluded. That goes against what was said before. Am I wrong?
You're right.
I am right.
So we are not, we are not going to discuss this matter. No, and in fact, she's actually inaccurate and the superintendent is correct. So I'm going to, I'm just going to have to respectfully disagree.
So you were saying children were not locked in bathrooms.
I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not in a position to- as I, excuse me, this is not a back and forth. I am not going to comment on this matter. I'm going to ask you to respect-
You have one community member here who would like to understand what was said incorrectly. Does anyone want to know what was incorrect?
Yes.
And you need to respond, Mr. Chairman.
I actually don't think that this is going to aid you getting-
Bill, I apologize, but please don't. We're not going to respond. We are in the middle of our board dialogue. We respectfully listen to public forums. There are, there are oftentimes inaccurate statements made by our community members that we do not go out of our way to correct. This is not a forum for attempting to complete a picture where it would be inappropriate to do so. And as I stated previously, every matter of abuse is investigated fully.
This is true.
This, this, I'm going to suggest a recess of the board. May I have a second? Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Six zero. Thank you. The board is adjourned for a recess. We'll come back at 10:00 PM. Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to return to our meeting? Thank you, Bill, seconded by Catherine. All in favor? Six zero. Great, thank you. Thank you for your patience and for allowing us to regroup. I will reiterate something that I mentioned just a moment ago, which is that every allegation of child abuse in an educational setting is investigated fully and the findings are shared appropriately resulting in actions. And that we understand that, and you have helped us to understand viscerally how hard it is to live with an incomplete picture and without what I imagine would be some kind of public tribunal. We, however, as your fiduciaries, cannot and nor would it be appropriate for us to comment freely on any personnel matter or subject of current litigation against the school district. And neither can we take time in this forum to correct misperceptions. That is not, in our purview, that is not the right work of a board of education that is working daily to provide a safe learning environment for every child. This is, this is a board dialogue for the board among board colleagues. And the, this was, if board members, Ilana, you are waiting to speak. I did have one other thing I had wanted, no, no, no. After you speak, I have a different topic, not related to this, but a different comment I had wanted to share. But please, I would be happy to listen to you first.
Thanks. So the first question, just as a newer board member, a point of clarification on board dialogue, that my understanding of just the structure of the board meeting is that there's public comment and then board dialogue is a chance to talk about public comment publicly, as we're obliged to do under open meeting law, and then talk about other issues of concern publicly among the board. And so that's certainly, as a member of many public forums and different things, it's different from how a community meeting might go where there might be back and forth. Is that correct?
That's accurate. The board dialogue, it has been and is generally constructed as an opportunity for the board to engage in dialogue. This is the-
With the board.
With the board. It's an informal portion of our meeting. It's not an agenda item that was publicly noticed in advance. But it provides an opportunity, since we come together infrequently, to conduct the business of the school district to do a couple of things, either to address new topics of concern or of interest to individual board members who want to share those topics with us as the governance team. Or in the event that board members wish to discuss with their board colleagues and the administration matters that were brought to our attention by our community, this is our opportunity to do that. But thank you for clarifying in case board, community members were not aware. This is not a dialogue with the community. This is a dialogue for board members and for the governance team. The public forum period is our opportunity to listen. We do not engage in back and forth at any time during these meetings. Thank you.
I have another comment, but if you want to finish what you're saying before.
Yeah, no, please, go right ahead.
So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for coming this evening and sharing your stories. I know a number of us had met prior to me joining the board. And I continued from then to now to hear a lot of pain and fear. and concern for your children and for other children in the district. And I think we all, I mean, I certainly felt it hearing your stories each time that I've heard them, including tonight. And I really want to validate that and sort of say it's felt, it's heard. And I think what I, what I'm also hearing is that there's a, there's a sense that the district is not responding to that. And so I'm wondering, and this is maybe a question for the superintendent, what I, we've heard specific ideas of things that maybe could be changed. So what would be the next steps for a group of parents that are concerned? To have the matters be considered, like where, so there are specific proposals and as you talked about earlier, they might be more complex than just sort of a simple passing of a new policy. Where might that get discussed and explored? Like what would be the forum to do that in? Would we have to look at each specific policy? Would it be a focus group? But you know, where, where might the next steps go to kind of take it from being presented at a public meeting into some sort of action?
That's actually, it's a very good question. Thank you. We've been discussing it internally among our administration. Deciding which steps we think we can take and in some cases, reaching out to some of the individual parents to engage in further conversation. To some degree to think about that question. But it's not, it's not a comprehensive thought about all the different, the five different strategies that were mentioned because each one is different. It probably has a different path to be considered under. So I can't give you a single answer. But I have, I have reached out and I hope will be taken up on that invitation to do some further thinking with, because there is more thinking to do. Both internally and with some of the representatives. And I don't mind saying it here and I'll say it now, I don't think it's productive to meet with an entire group initially. Because I think there's careful thinking and I see, I see some frustration in that comment, not my intention. But the, I think these things require careful planning and thinking and understanding. As I said tonight, there are individual words that we use that people hear differently. It takes time to unpack that, try to reach some common understanding. My interest in achieving that, but that takes time and it takes an openness to having questions go back and forth. Takes coming into a meeting with some humility on both sides. I go into a meeting thinking I might be wrong about this and I'd like to hear more about it. And that kind of environment has to be nurtured carefully. Very carefully, I think.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm also curious. I mean, the other thing that I really heard is sort of a lack of a feeling of trust that has been eroded. And I think that that's not, that's not policy. That's, that's a sense of safety and trust. And I think as I've heard Marjorie say multiple times and Andrew say that, of course, the district is committed to the safety of every student, but the feeling that I'm hearing is that there's not, there's not a trust in that. And so I wonder, I think, you know, so there's the policy ideas and ways to kind of address that. But I'm wondering also what we might do to help rebuild a trust between some of the parents that are here this evening and many others maybe that aren't here and the district to have a sense to sort of what, you know, what actions, I'm curious from the parents, if you could communicate outside of this meeting, what actions would be needed to help rebuild that trust? And I'm curious in the administration's perspective, what actions might be taken to help rebuild that trust? Because I think, you know, certainly I know when in my first meeting, there was a policy that was passed and pulled off the consent agenda to explain the change in policy around notifying when restraint is used, right? That was that, so that to me seems responsive, but not necessarily sufficient. So how do we continue to kind of communicate what has been done, what's being currently considered? You know, and ways to kind of build that trust. I'm just, I'm not sure of a specific name, but it's sort of a question because I really heard that tonight a lot. And I mean, I heard that and I think we all think about that. I mean, the first time you drop your child at school, it's a big act of trust and faith that your child will be safe there. And while I'm not sure that there are some children maybe here directly that were unsafe, but a lot of people also heard the stories and the ripple impact of that eroding trust. And how do we kind of address that? I'm not, I mean, it's sort of, I think it's a bigger question, but I think it's one that needs a little bit of attention. Yeah, so I think I'll, I'll leave that out there. I'm not sure if there's something to say.
Elon, I think one of the things that's challenging with, with developing and maintaining trust is again, sort of an expectation for information that we're not able to share. I know all of you from meeting with you and I trust, which I know it's hard, you don't know us, but I trust my own commitment to all students in our district. I trust all of your commitment to education for all students and, and both on just what I've observed in your participation here in events I've been at with you as part of PTA or, you know, PTO meetings. And the stories you've reflected on, on how important it is to you to volunteer your time to make sure that we are creating a school district that's really serving all students. I, I trust that. And I know that for community members who don't know us, there's reasons that they might not trust that. So I can only hope that if people have seen us have conversations together, they see us as reflective and interested in creating a really positive school environment. And, you know, I, I'm super grateful that people have shared their experiences with us. And I think, I hope that you would trust that. You know, we, I don't come with an agenda other than creating a great school environment. I have a child with an IEP, so I've experienced, so, so I think there's maybe assumptions that we don't have any shared experiences together and we do. It's challenging sometimes for us to not be able to reassure you with information that we're not able to share. And I think we have to think about how to create reassurances when, when I think an expectation of transparency around things that we are just not able to be transparent about aren't possible. So, yeah, I think we have to, to think about that and it's, I imagine it's very frustrating. I'm sure it's very frustrating, but I guess all I can say as, as a parent and a community member. I can only assure you for however much you would listen to what I say with any merit. This is a group of people who care deeply about children. Who volunteer their time because they think education is incredibly important and it makes me really sad that people would question that because I know who these people are. And how committed they are to the work that they do as school board members. So I hope that you can trust that. And I think that there's probably actions that make that not seem like it's true, but, but it is. And I think we just have to work through what the best path is to get there. And, and I also will say, you know, Andrew as a superintendent is incredibly receptive and communicative and open. And he's, he's a listener. And since he joined our district, I have not seen that. It's been unwavering. I mean, he responds to, to people when they ask him questions. He listens and I just, I hope that over time that trust can be reestablished because I certainly think that's all of our goal.
To tag along with a few things. So first is I also appreciate everybody taking the time and bearing their souls. And if they think we're not moved by it, then they're wrong. We are moved by the stories. I think I, I agree that there ought to be some way we can better message or communicate what is being done. The now infamous line used against me that I cannot speak, it wasn't because of the advice of lawyers, it's because I'm following the law. I'm not allowed to speak about other people's children. I'm not allowed to speak about some things by law. And that was my point, but I also think that in terms of trust, it, it it, it is usually, sort of what Julie was saying, that we serve on this board because we have certain views and certain passions. And to have those called into question by people who don't really know me at all. To be called arrogant, smug, too comfortable, et cetera, et cetera, is a hard, you know, it we're trying to help. We're trying to, we're trying to make things better and it, I don't think it's productive. Like for example, tonight, we, we sat, we listened. And then we started talking and then we were interrupted. I think it, this has to be a understanding, almost like a presumption of good intent. That people aren't on the board with the intention of trying to frustrate a group of parents today. That, that if there's things specifically that we can say or do to better communicate what's going on and where we are and, you know, what the response is and why there's hangups and what's easy and what's not so easy. I think that's all to the good. I agree with that. But I also think it's, it's like Andrew mentioned, you know, even from the comments we heard tonight, they were not all the same. They didn't all come to the same conclusions. There were differences amongst you. And I think that that you can imagine that if you multiply it by the, by the entire school population, that it's not always so clear what the next step should be for things. But I do want to, for whatever, you know, I became a physician to help people. I went, I joined the board in order to help with the schools. If it's of any consequence that, you know, I the only thing I'd like to do is to make this better and to try and get to a point where the trust is there again and that any of the the issues are addressed or resolved, or at least, you know, discussed and, and dissected a little bit.
Thank you.
I also just want to say thank you for being here. I heard you. And I promise that as a board member, we will, we want what's best for each one of your students, for every child in this district. So thank you again for being here and tell, sharing your stories with us. We heard you.
I just wanted to speak to the concern that any of us is complacent with respect to the matters that are being shared here or other matters that affect any of our students and to acknowledge that people who have reached out to us even on this matter have more often than not, I will say, but for this evening where I think we really did hear different information and different stories and different experiences in our school district that we all need to reflect on. But prior to that, many people who've reached out to us individually or as a corporate body on these matters have actually begun their communications by almost admitting that they have a child who receives services, who does feel safe and is thriving. And who has received the support they need. And here I'm actually quoting from an email from a community member. And who then go on to say, it breaks my heart. I'm angry and frustrated by what I'm reading and what I'm hearing. And I do feel it is important to acknowledge the disconnect that many people are feeling between the very positive experiences they're having in our schools and our classrooms. And some of what's being said publicly on social media, in the newspaper, et cetera. And of course, here tonight, where again, I want to acknowledge that we have heard new stories and new information and new pain. I mention that here because up until this year of pandemic, we as a corporate body had opportunities, as did our parents and community members to be in our schools. And that's another thing we heard tonight, you know, we want to be in the schools. We want to be part of our children's education. And we want our students and our families to be treated just like everybody else. And I want to acknowledge here too, that this is a real loss for every child, every family and as a corporate body that we haven't been in our schools. And when we have been, it's been a point of pride to meet with teachers who interact with and support on a daily basis, some of our most vulnerable students, some of the very students who are being discussed and represented here tonight. And if that were not the case, if we were experiencing low trust or disconnect or hearing from any parents this level of concern or fear, we would be acting on it. And so I think it's important to clarify for people who might be wondering and tuning in for the first time ever or in a long time to clarify that this level of fear, concern or any sort of insinuation that a department is broken, you know, that, that's coming from a few people. And it has not been my experience or observation that that's a view that's widely held in our schools. So of course I hear that, I listen to it. But I do think it's important to acknowledge that we do have community members who are feeling solidarity, but also experiencing a disconnect between the very positive experiences that their kids have in our schools every day and what they're hearing. As are some of us. And I do believe that part of that is exacerbated by a pandemic situation where none of us have been in the schools. None of us have met and interacted with our children's teachers in the manner that any of us would have wished to. And I do have a hope and a thought that the more that we can invite people back, invite parents back into partnership in our schools. Perhaps that is one measure that can restore trust. Yes, please.
So I also heard tonight that, and this is something that I, that we liked when we moved to the district, that a lot of people moved here for the special education programming in our community. And that it's well regarded and, you know, that it's, it's appealing. It's something that draws people to the district. And I'm wondering when there are questions about the program or as we heard, there's expertise in the community and people that want to offer their help, how do they do that? And how do they kind of, you know, there are very specific proposals and I heard like certain interventions that were proposed. How might people who have that to offer plug in on those issues?
I would say again, similar to what I said before, there's not a monolithic answer to that. All right, this, that covers lots of different ground. But as has been said, and I appreciate it tonight. We never, we never turn down a request to come in and meet with us. We never do. Now, those meetings can lead in very different directions. And we've seen that here. We've seen initiatives in some cases take hold when some community members have made a suggestion and it's moved forward. And other times that doesn't happen. So it does vary. You know, and I think, I think that may be a piece of frustration for people. You know, why that one and not this one? And there are reasons. Because yes, there's expertise in the community and we really appreciate that. And there's expertise in the district too. Right? And we don't always agree.
I think also, I mean, hopefully on, when you're on, you'll be on parent council, which you know, that's a meeting of all of the presidents or vice presidents of our PTO organizations with Andrew and a board representative and I believe the cabinet is there or at least, and I think, you know, sometimes those are places where we actually explore those ideas. So things will, you know, things will come up and sometimes that's a place for us to sort of get feedback on something that's suggested to say like, oh, what are you hearing in your school and what's your parent community? You know, how are they feeling, et cetera? So that's, that's one place. You know, not necessarily for sort of what you're talking about in terms of people with expertise, but I think in terms of, you know, how do things happen or, or, you know, I mean, when we were talking about changing the start times, I certainly know those are things we discussed with that group. And we hope that with their partnership, you know, we have that meeting for the express purpose of having partnership with our school communities using those organizations as, as a touch point for us. So I think when there's other issues, you know, if there, there are sort of more questions that don't have a clear answer, but things we feel that the district should discuss, I think Andrew has planned learning cafes where the learning cafes are attended by teachers, admin- teachers, administrators and board members, along with the public and our facilitated discussions that we're not necessarily trying to find a specific answer, but it's a conversation where we can talk about difficult topics that we know there's lots of, you know, lots of different perspectives. So those are places where people can be in dialogue. I don't necessarily think those always end in a, an action that people expect or, you know, so so they, we still may have some dissatisfaction, but I think those are opportunities for us to hear feedback. And, um, those structures are in place for, for those reasons.
And I just want to reflect one more thing that I heard, um, this evening. And I, I hear there's a lot of good listening going on, but I think maybe one area where we can continue to grow and do a little better maybe is around communication back with the people that are coming to us. And so I know it's a frustrating experience to be here. You speak, we don't engage with you. We sort of talk amongst each other. It's not a back and forth. And so I don't think that, that's not the same as like, we can't tell you everything about a child abuse investigation. I think there can be more communication back and maybe upon, maybe that's upon the board and upon the administration to think a little more about how we kind of, when questions are brought up, there's a affirmative communication back.
I agree with that. I, I do. Um, but I do have to say that it was a little frustrating to know that we sat here and we listened with, and I, for me specifically, with great compassion and respect. And then, and then feeling really pretty attacked and accused of things that are simply not true and to have the, the interruption. So I would ask, you know, with great respect again, if we could continue this, because I think we're going to be a lot more productive if we can work together without making accusations or, you know, just kind of having interruptions when we are trying to discuss the many things that the community members brought to us.
Yeah, I also wonder if there might be another forum where a discussion can take place where there can be more back and forth.
Yeah.
Because the board meeting is, does not seem to be the correct forum for that.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and so that's frustrating. So what's the next step? I mean, I, I know these parents have been to three board meetings in a row. So like, I just, I, I think there, there is, I'm hearing a desire for discussion and I'm one, and I'm not hearing an answer of where, I'm hearing an invitation from Andrew to have meetings. I, I'd be, I maybe the, maybe the people here tonight can reach out with a specific ask for a type of meeting. That might be useful, you know, or for, I, I just, I think something like that may.
But I do just need to add in, in fairness to the board, that every community member who has reached out to the board individually has received a response that has said, please allow us to have a conversation with you. Please let us know when and with whom you would like to speak. And no one has taken us up on the invitation. So I think it's a question. I do think it's, I do think it's a question for how it, it actually, I mean, I, I, I draft the correspondence on behalf of the board and I, I end by saying, would, would you like to have a conversation? So it's, it's, it is a good question. I, I think the group would like to meet as a group. And I think Andrew has been very clear that he is working hard to meet with a few people to better understand how to be productive on behalf of every child in this school district. And not just this group of parents who have among themselves formed a solidarity for a variety of reasons.
Yeah. I, I just also, I mean, I hear, I, I hear a little bit among my colleagues, a sense of feeling attacked and I it's hard to sit and you guys have done it for many, many more meetings and years than I have. Um, I do also want to see that I, I think not, I, I just, I really hear it coming from a place of fear and concern and it's not it, it's not to, to, to undermine anybody on the board or anybody's commitment. I, I think it's really coming from that place. And if, if there's a way to kind of meet meet that and, and answer that and not, not kind of make it a back and forth. And I respect, I think the boards conducts productive meetings. I'm glad to be part of it. I'm learning a lot. I think we're modeling what democratic process looks like and what, you know, what these rules are. So I, I just want to kind of acknowledge that.
No, I would agree wholeheartedly. I think we don't want any parents to feel disappointed in the educational experience of their child, let alone fearful about sending their child to school. And I completely agree. I think we all agree that we are hearing heartfelt fear and concern from from parents here with us this evening. I think as to how, how to mitigate that and move forward, I think Andrew is working hard to invite people into conversation. I think we also have invited people into conversation to less success. And clearly tonight, we heard that people were waiting for us to reach out. And I, that's helpful to hear. That's good feedback.
I think there has to be also a, a understanding that we are a board of education when there's a quorum of us and we discuss an issue and we vote on it. That's, that's our action and that it might be frustrating. You can meet with us anytime you want and you can talk with us, but we can't act. But we can't sit, we can't leave a meeting with you and say, oh, okay, this is what we're going to do. You know, that sounds good. Let's, let's change this. That's just not how it works. But there has to sort of be the, I don't know, the, the understanding that, um, much of what we do is information gathering. Uh, and then we talk and, you know, we, we can then effect action if necessary, but it, it's, it's it might be inherently frustrating any, any way we do it. If you have a meeting where people are pouring their heart out, at the end of the meeting, you're not saying, I agree with everything you said. Here are the seven things we're going to do differently. Yeah, I think that's just, it's just, it's just not how an individual on the board can react.
I would also just add, Alana, we're not, we're not conceding that there aren't going to be meetings and we're not going to think together. What are we trying to do? Just be thoughtful about how we do it. A few, several, I'm thinking about a meeting several years ago, when we very unfortunately had a series of swastikas in the district. And in that occasion, we did hold a meeting in the cafeteria that about a hundred and fifty people came to. And we tried to think in advance very hard about how to make that the most productive meeting that it could be. And in some ways, maybe it was a productive meeting in that some people got to vent very powerful feelings that they were having at the time. In terms of that being a meeting that initiated changes moving forward, I'm not sure that I can say in hindsight that it did. Because as I said, it's really complicated to form a productive meeting out of a group that size. There are a lot of group dynamics that become involved. Understandably, that was an emotionally charged issue, as is this one, understandably. So we just want to be thoughtful about how we move forward and how we continue. We have to plan these conversations so they can be as productive as possible. I don't think it just happens, uh, that we say we all want to meet. That would be best. So let's just do it. Uh, I think we have to think through these things and, and what I'd like to do is, is hopefully do that together.
I mean, I guess I think I'm just going to reiterate, I think we all have the same goal.
Yeah.
That, that parents feel that their child are in a safe environment with trusted adults who will take care of them and educate them. We all want that. I know I want that. I know all of you want that. And so we just have to figure out the path to, to be clear that that's what we're doing and what our expectation is of our, of our teachers. And, you know, I, I think I have heard in my time in the district, both as a PTA president and attending Septo events and being on the board. My sense is that that is very much the experience of, of many parents. And when that's not the case, we want to understand that and, and fix it. And I, I believe we have acted in our responsibilities in situations that, that we have, you know, acted swiftly and, and appropriately. Um, so we just have to keep working towards that goal.
Can I ask a question in a different direction?
Sure.
A little bit. I just, I heard also the, um, comments on literacy and I know that it's come up before. So just sort of wondering where the discussion ended, where it is kind of um, among the administration or the board.
I think, I think we've been updated. Well, go please, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just to give you a, a current update. I mean, even this summer, um, we're doing lots of work around literacy. Um, we had our reading institute last week. It's homegrown and certainly have incorporated the science of reading into a lot of what we're doing with our teachers. Um, things that I know Mrs. Black and Mrs. Black have talked to me about several occasions. Um, looking at things like the queuing system, the kinds of decodable texts as well as other texts that we incorporate into our classroom libraries and especially for our early readers. Um, so we're really taking a close look at all of our practices. Again, we had a book study that just ended today. Called Shifting the Balance. Um, and it's really kind of looking at the science of reading along with some balanced literacy practices that have long been in place. Um, and we also did update at the end of the school year, all of our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers refresh their training in foundations, which is our primary word study program, which is Orton Gillingham base. Um, and we continue to certify teachers every year, um, in Wilson. So we sponsor them in terms of their professional learning and then they are paid to have the sessions, um, with individual students, which is a necessary component of the certification. So I think, you know, in light of some of the conversations we've had in the past and some of the concerns. And I think staying current in terms of the literature in the reading world is really important to all of us. You know, it's important to me. Um, you know, some of these things are coming together and I think we're making improvements every day. We're certainly committed to improving our practices all the time and, and looking at research and making revisions as we go.
Thank you. And I, I've been, I mean, I'm always impressed with the superintendent and the cabinet that kind of does a continual learning approach within the district and doing that. Sort of relatedly, when parents have questions about curriculum, or is there any sort of regular calendar in which curriculum is evaluated, in which there's an opportunity for community input? I mean, obviously you guys are the experts on this, but I also know, again, we have a lot of expertise in our community. We're blessed to have a lot of people that know a lot about this. And then we also have parents who are stakeholders who have the experience of seeing their kids learning, which is obviously an important input into thinking about the effectiveness of curriculum. So is there a process that exists for parent input into thinking about curriculum? That is structured that you could tell any parent, besides, I know you're very open to talking to parents, but sort of a more formal process where we look at curriculum on some sort of rotated, like was there ever a curriculum committee? That was made up not just of administrators and teachers, but also parents and like stakeholders.
We don't have a formal structure for that right now. Um, we do have our curriculum council, which is made up of teacher leaders and administrators that meets monthly. Um, so we're always looking at our curriculum and certainly always open to hearing from parents who have concerns and, you know, and not unlike other issues, sometimes concerns are shared, sometimes suggestions are shared. And they're always considered. They may not always be acted upon, but they're always certainly considered seriously. And we take every child's experience very seriously.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Not sure whether board members had other topics. I did think we might just want to briefly revisit the structure of public forum, having transitioned from our virtual environment to an in-person environment. We did have a couple of community members write to us um, expressing, um, frustration at the loss of opportunity to participate in public forum remotely. Of course, we're live casting the meetings. We're pleased to be able to do that as a result of having implemented new technologies during the pandemic. Um, and so we've had two meetings now in this new school year together in person and very much appreciate the opportunity to be able to conduct the business of the school district in person and to be able to welcome community members here. But I did think it might be an opportunity to just check in as a board and to, um, ensure that everybody's feeling comfortable with our new, uh, protocols and to share perspectives if people had constructive suggestions or observations.
There was a question of the participation end of the remote. So for example, tonight's meeting was live cast, right? So people can see it.
Yes.
Question was, could they participate? Today was sort of an interesting example of how people weren't here and have their voice heard. I think that actually went probably better than reading an email, for example. I think that was but I'm not sure. It's, you know, in terms of people remotely on a video screen interacting with us, I, I don't know if that would work or if that would be productive.
I guess I think about, um, just in a work environment where I've transitioned from having, you know, many, many meetings be on Zoom and now in person. And I just think there's something um, that's lost in, I think you can, you certainly can functionally hear the person and uh, ha, allow them that opportunity to be heard. But I just think being in person is very different and I I still sort of prefer that, that public forum be in person. And, um, I don't mean to be obstructionist in that way and that like it may prevent some people from being able to speak to us. Um, but I think I, I don't put any more weight on something that's said to us here in public forum than I do on an email that we receive to our board of education email. So I, I feel like if you're able to speak to us here and make a statement here, then do that. And if not, you know, please contact us via email. Um, I don't know. I, so I think I would prefer to have public forum continue to be in person. But I'm certainly open to feedback and, and thoughts from other board members.
Thank you.
Alana. Um, so I, I think it's wonderful that the meeting was streamed tonight and, uh, welcome to everybody who's still on the remote meeting. Thank you. Um, I, I think that when we have an opportunity to lower barriers to participation, we should always take that up. And so I'm wondering, my proposal, I think I would like us to consider is to try out what a hybrid engagement might look like at a meeting so that we allow people to not only watch remotely, but also participate remotely. It was very powerful. I agree. It's always better when people can come in person. But as we received several communications about it this week with different reasons why people couldn't come in person. And, you know, noticeably from our first meeting when we were all unmasked and now we're all masked. I think health, raised like health concerns, people have physical, we sort of not ability to kind of get here in person. Um, I know for me, it was very hard to come to meetings until they were streamed remotely. And then I could really participate a lot more. And I think we all know the power of hearing in everybody's own words, even if it's remote, is, is better than it being kind of read in email. So I would propose that we think about or consider doing public forum both in person and remotely with the same rules that we have remotely. So three minutes of speaking. Um, and that we, we try it out, see how it goes. Um, you know, if it's not working, then, then we stop. But I think it's something worth experimenting with while we still have the opportunity to both be in person and remote. And then if we were to have to go remote, maybe it's a forum that we could continue, that people could still speak as opposed to having, um, things all read.
What would be the logistics? That's interesting. But what would be the, how would?
Well, town boards have been doing it all over Westchester, you know, so I think, and also our students were doing it all year. Right? Like teachers were in the classroom with half the students in the classroom and half the students on Zoom. So they've been doing it. I think we can probably figure out how to do it.
Is that we, we would each have a Zoom or?
Maybe we have, I, I would have it. Uh, maybe just a big screen that we are all seeing and maybe we have our screens on so you can see us more. I'm not sure. I mean, I think we can figure out and I, I would trust the technology department to figure out how to do that. Um, I mean, our teachers were doing, I, I, I think there's an answer to it and we could ask the town board. We can learn from mistakes that have been made in other meetings, um, to think about how we could do it better.
From my perspective, the primary purpose of coming together as a governance team is to conduct the business of the district. I think it's important to create an opportunity for public forum. I think our efforts to the extent that we're going to be creative in the near future would be better served by creating forums for actual dialogue, meaningful dialogue. forums for actual dialogue, meaningful dialogue or opportunities for conversation. Where we can better understand community members' perspectives, we can engage in back and forth. And in turn, better advocate for children. I don't feel that the public forum dimension of a board meeting is the primary the primary sort of impetus for what our structure should be. I think we're in person now. It's terrific to be able to hear from our community members. I thought what we did tonight worked very well. And I would be more inclined if we're going to invest energy in trying to be responsive and open to really thinking creatively about how else can we engage in meaningful dialogue outside of the board meetings? Because I think even tonight, we saw a very high level of frustration among parents, even those who were here in person, able to speak with us in their own voices. I'm not sure how satisfying that was for people. And I'm not sure that just creating additional opportunity for that frustration is really going to help us provide the best possible education for every student. You know, that's that's sort of what I observed tonight.
I I mean, I'm not, I'm I would say, first of all, I think I think we can do both. I hope we I hope we can explore both types of options for meaningful back and forth as well as this. I don't think this is a high bar. I have high faith in our technology department. We were running this with 2,800 students in the district all year. So technologically, I don't think it's a real challenge. I think it's sort of a, I question, what's the concern about kind of allowing this and? Yeah, what's the, what's the, what would be the downside to it?
Um, well, it's 11 o'clock right now. I mean, it does, like, you know, we've had board meetings where we've, you know, had listened to the same form letter repeated again and again. And then it, I think, you know, you get to a certain point where it starts to deteriorate the dialogue where we have, you know, it it would be good for us as a board to be able to discuss what we've heard, the presentation or the public forum. And, you know, you get to a point where at 11 o'clock, that kind of is the thing that falls off. And I think actually to me, one of the most important parts of the board meeting is the board dialogue where we can interact with our colleagues to understand where people are coming from and, you know, any thoughts or ideas that might have bubbled up from the community, you know, just being out, talking to other parents and things like that. And I do worry that you get to a point where you've so, you know, put forth the ability for everybody to participate. And I'm not saying I don't want people to participate because I think that it is a very worthy cause to look for additional ways in which to engage the community and be able to have an actual conversation versus, you know, a speaking point for the community and then a speaking point for the board without you know, exchanging ideas and really kind of feeling satisfied that you've had a conversation that was understood and, you know, is potentially actionable. Um, but I think that just having board meetings that that run, you know, kind of interminably does decrease their effectiveness as the entire, you know, kind of business corporate body of of the school district. So I am all in for, you know, if you caught like I don't, I don't even want to throw ideas out there because I don't know what's feasible and what's allowable, as you know, as individual board members. But I think that there are things that need to get done at the public board meeting that is our charge, that we want to try to protect a little bit. And so that we're not just it it just would feel more effective to me to to try and and augment our ability to do it elsewhere. So that everyone can feel like they've been heard and responded to rather than just make it an opportunity for some people to say their piece, other people to say their piece, and then no interaction among them. I mean, I think part of it is, I think that if in fact public forum would just be, there'd be some people at the microphone and then there'd be some people on the screen and it would be seamless is interesting. I think I I think what you're hearing is like anxiety that it wouldn't be seamless and that our meeting would be like somewhat caught up in like, oh, I can't hear you. Your mic's not on. Oh, my mic's not working. Like some of those like potential technology pitfalls start to, we get dragged into that. You know what I mean? With the best of intentions of hearing people. And it's maybe not the best way. I don't know. So that like, that's where I like, I picture that it becomes like, hold on, I have to switch to the other person. And I mean, even if you're like on a call and show on the radio happens, they pick up, the person's not there, they wait, okay, we'll call back if you're here. Like, I guess I would. I don't want us to have too much deterioration to our work. And that's the like. If, and I guess your point is how do we know until we try, right? And then maybe it is seamless, but I'm just concerned that we're going to be having to bring people into a meeting, make sure their mic is on, get them set up. I just, I think when we have presentations during Zoom where we would have like multiple teachers come in. So during during the pandemic, we would have presentations and they would be very coordinated. And there was a lot of practice to make sure that when the person who was giving their presentation passed the baton to the next person, that that person was ready for their camera to be turned on, their mic was on, like we choreographed that so that those presentations would run smoothly and not take too long. And I think this choreography of including people from home, I think could be cumbersome and perhaps at cross purposes to our own work, when if a person really has something that they want us to hear, there is a vehicle for them to do that by emailing us. But that's, that's kind of my concern.
You think there's a big untapped, I think you you stated at some point, you you're concerned that there's a significant untapped market, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a group of people who would want to participate. But there's childcare or?
Yeah, I mean, we heard, we heard from several parents this week that had different reasons for wanting to come, but were not able to participate. And some we were able to sort of accommodate with people reading their letters, but not for everybody. And we don't know what the other topics were. So yes, I think that. And I also, so I'm hearing that there's a concern that we might not be able to conduct our business. And I think the current policy on public participation accounts for that. So policy 1230 says the Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to listen and respond to public comment and therefore welcomes and encourages public participation in school-related matters at board meetings. And then it also says, but it that it can't interfere with the business of the board. So if we were to do something like this and we're finding it's going forever, we can't get to the board business. One, perhaps we shift the order of the agenda so that public comment comes at the end and we do all the board business beforehand and then we have it, you know, that's one idea. Two, we could also, the board policy allows for us to limit the amount of public comments so that while we might not get everybody and we could say we were only going to have one hour of public comment today because, you know. So I think there's ways around that. And I think if we tried it out and we saw this is not working, then we can stop it. But perhaps we'd find that we're getting more participation, we're getting participation on other topics, we're getting more, you know, I think one of the fundamental tenets of kind of our democracy is about participation and allowing multiple people to participate. And I think when you lower the barriers, you get it. And the technological concerns, I mean, I have faith in our technology department. They've been had a lot of practice and unfortunately, all of us have had a lot of practice on Zoom over the last year. So I think we have this and we also have every town board in Westchester to learn from because they've been doing this for a year. So we're not, we don't have to start from the beginning. And we may be the first school district doing that, but I'd love us to be a leader on lowering barriers to participation and really inviting community participation because I think it will lead to better policies. Think it will lead to better education of all of our students. I I really do. It's not, you know, and and I think, you know, try it. And if it doesn't work, we can, we can scrap it. But also we had then have practice for if we have to shift our format, hopefully not. I mean, I hope. I hope we can be in person and unmasked again in the near future.
Then do we, do we feel like we have consensus that we want to ask the technology? I don't, I'm not hearing like a clear.
This just wouldn't be my priority right now. I think there's an awful lot to be done to get school open in the fall. I think people are working harder than they ever have over the summer. I think that public forum invites interesting dynamics. And I think once you open it up remotely, our policy currently doesn't have any prohibition on, for example, participation by non-residents. So tonight, for example, we heard from a woman who doesn't live in our school district, lives in Somers. Some school boards have prescriptions or they prescribe who can participate. So immediately a question comes to mind, would we bring the public participation policy back to the policy committee? And now be looking at other school districts to talk about, would it be relevant and important in protecting our ability to conduct our business to draw some boundaries? Because once you have remote participation, that could be somebody, you know, an alumni living out in DC or in California or where have you, who wants to share their perspective? And I could see the argument, what's wrong with that? But I also know the times that we're in and the extraordinary amount of work to be done. So when I think about democracy, we've each been elected to safeguard every child's right to the best possible education. There is a lot of work to be done. And so for me, this is not the priority right now. I do respect and appreciate that some, a few, let's be clear, a few community members reached out to us and would have preferred to be able to either have their comments read perhaps by the district clerk or by a board member. Or perhaps they would have preferred even more so to be elevated to a panelist in a Zoom format. For me, it's not that, you know, technologically, it's so challenging, although I do think there would be complexity. It's that I don't think this is what we should be focusing on right now. I think our community has very high expectations for what's about to happen in the fall. I believe we heard a lot of very important insights tonight. I also believe there was a perpetuation of some misconstrued scenarios. And I'm not sure that creating more and more access for a repetition or a perpetuation of misunderstandings in some cases is actually helping every child be safer and have a better experience in our school district. So I do actually have some substantive concerns about the potential impact of expanding. It's not for me just about the technology and the logistics. That being said, you know, there's so much to do. If the board wants to try that and that's the will of this board, by all means, you know, please, but people need to be very clear and giving some direction as to how they would like to move forward so that we aren't also just continuing to revisit it. I think it's important that we you know, air all the sides and make a decision and move on and help our community understand the decision as best we can and create opportunities for meaningful dialogue so that we can better understand the perspectives of community members and get to know these individuals better and advocate more effectively for their kids. I personally, I'm not sure that I agree that enhanced access to public forum is the way to get there. But I do respect the hopefulness that you bring that it might be. And I I'm very open to that.
Um, I'd like to just modify the proposal. I think we actually should look at participation rules. Who can write soon because of what's happening in national dialogues and at other boards, school boards that are being inundated with people from outside the district. Like I, I think this would be a good time to do that. It will save us time in the future to look at that. So maybe along with it, I'm also not sure, like why it would take so much resource to kind of make this change because you've done, you know, I I was elevated into a meeting as a public, as a remote participant.
I think we've misunderstood each other. I'm not actually saying it would take so much work technologically.
Yeah.
I'm saying that by contrast, there's a lot of other work that we as a governance team need to be talking about and thinking about and preparing for and how we need to be spending our time. And that I feel it's important always to have, I mean, obviously in the pandemic, the governor said you could suspend public forum. You don't even need to have a public forum. And of course, Katona Lewis-Broer would maintain a placeholder for public forum and we did manage to hear from community members in every board meeting.
Many districts didn't.
Satisfaction, correct, not to the satisfaction and not in the manner that every community member would have liked. But do I believe that most people in our community by and large were very satisfied with how we conducted our business and could be counted on to conduct orderly meetings and get the business of the school district done? I do. I think people appreciated that and are counting on us to do it again. And I'm not sure that our community at large is waiting to see a change here. That's just my, but that is my perspective. It doesn't mean we can't try. It doesn't mean maybe, you know, something good would be on the other side of that. And that's where I need to really defer to the rest of you. So please, let's, let's do that.
I think given the implications of some of the policies, we'd have to look at other topics that we've yet to begin hearing about from public forum that are wildly talked about right now in terms of our equity and 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 our inclusion and equity and racial justice, et cetera. I think I'm inclined to suggest that maybe we table this until we get through, I mean, I I don't know whether kids are going to be in mass, not like, there's a lot of, I would suggest we table it and maybe revisit it. Um, at we, you know, at some point in a few months from now, once we get school underway. And again, encourage people who are unable to be at our meetings, please contact us, please reach out to us, please email us. And, you know, we want to hear your voice. So I I'm gonna, I would like to table it. I don't, but.
I think that makes sense. I agree.
I think you should also worry, I think would be useful for this because the
And again, and I don't think, again, I
I don't think we have to worry about implementation because, you know, we're, we're not here in our specialist capacities. We're here as generalists. So you're absolutely right. He would know a lot about how to do it and certainly he'd have an opinion. So I think as a courtesy, that's a good, you know, very good point, Bill. You know, that being said, certainly it's not unprecedented for the board to make a decision in the absence of a board member and but but it's, it's, it's an option to table it for sure.
I think now would, I mean, I think now would be the time to kind of try it out. Like when kind of try it out, see what happens. If it's a total failure, drop it. Um, but I think that in the midst of making major decisions again about how we safely bring students back to school in the fall, I think we should allow for as much public participation. We haven't done a community debrief to hear, can I finish? I'm sorry. Like we haven't done a community debrief to hear about what parents experiences were, you know, I'm sure parents gave feedback, we did surveys. But we haven't kind of done that. And again, we're starting to hear people feeling concerned for safety, COVID reasons to not want to come in person. And I think now's the time to try it out, see if it's a total fail, like just, let's try it for a meeting. And then if it's, if it's like, you know, if it ends up being hours or, you know, but I just, I think we have tools to kind of make sure that we can, the policy as it exists allows us to limit, if we need to, the time of public comments that we can make sure that we still get to board business. And, you know, you have a sign up, you let people sign up with if they, if we don't get to it, we encourage people to submit their emails. But I do want to say that it's different to be able to speak in a public forum in your own voice than to send an email to the board. As much as we all read it and we take it very seriously, I think when people are coming and they want to public, they want to comment publicly, they want it to be heard publicly. And that you don't get that same effect with an email. And so I I just, I am always a strong believer in in letting people's voices heard. I think we end up with better policies and not everybody, as we've seen, can make it in person all the time. And we have the technology, so we should try it out and see how it goes. But I I wouldn't want to table it till later. I would think that we should try it now and we're kind of making some of these important decisions so that we can have all the voices.
I think I've heard so much and I'm still, it was such an intense meeting today that I'd even like to table it for the next meeting and I'd like to think about everything that was said. There was just so much information and I'm still feeling so I I'd like to just table it for at least one meeting so that we can think about it. There doesn't seem to be you know, an anonymous decision amongst all of us. So we've all said our piece. I I feel like I've heard from everybody and I'd really like to think about it to make a really thoughtful decision before I if if we have to vote before I vote, I'm not ready to do that yet.
Okay, that's very helpful. I appreciate everybody's viewpoint and.
As we're, as as we're considering it, I would also encourage anybody that's still listening to Sam, if you, if this is something you care about, to let us know so that it's not kind of just our our decisions, but if the community could kind of communicate with us and say, we would, we would participate in this or we don't need this, we really want to be in person. It actually is more powerful in person. I think that might be useful for us thinking about this as well.
That's an excellent point. Okay, so we'll revisit it at the next meeting, perhaps in board dialogue. Okay, so we'll revisit it at the next meeting, perhaps in board dialogue. And just to set expectations for this next meeting, then the August meeting, we would be presumably in person and welcoming community members in person. And community members who aren't able to attend can, if necessary, sign the waiver. Sometimes that's, you know, depending on the nature of the comments, may not even be necessary. And we will go from there. Okay, thank you, everyone. Were there any other topics for tonight? Okay, then this brings us to future meetings. The board will meet again on Thursday, August nineteenth, seven thirty here in the library. And then again, on Thursday, September second, seven thirty here in the library. And then finally, Thursday, September twenty third, seven thirty PM here in the library. And that brings us to an opportunity to make a motion to adjourn. Would someone like to make the motion? Thank you, Bill, seconded by Catherine, all in favor. Six zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Good night.